And the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, as well as Mayor Carradone's declaration of emergency dated March 15th, 2020. This meeting in the city council will be conducted via remote participation. We will post an audio recording, audio video recording, transcript or other comprehensive record of these proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the City of Somerville website and the local cable access government channels. Now please rise for prayer and pledge allegiance.
Mr. President, let's begin this meeting with a prayer. God grant this city council the serenity to accept the things that cannot be changed, the courage to change the things that can be changed, and the wisdom to know the difference. And now let's join in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
This is roll call, Councilor Klingon.
All right, President.
Counselor Mbah.
Present.
Counselor White.
Here.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Here.
Counselor Strezzo.
Present.
Counselor Niedergang.
Here.
Counselor Davis.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Present.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Here.
Counselor Rosetti.
Present.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yeah.
Mr. President, eleven counselors are present. We have a quorum.
Do we have any moments of silence? Counselor Ewan Campen.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Tonight, I'd like to remember Brian Flynn, who died in November of this year at the age of 62 of pancreatic cancer. So Brian was not a Somerville resident. He worked at Greater Boston Legal Services for many, many years. And the reason that I'd like us to remember him tonight in particular is because he was involved in our wage theft ordinance last year. He was part of the coalition. I know Counselor Scott worked with members of the Greater Boston Legal Services. And Brian was someone who, you know, gave his life to union organizing, to workers' rights, to unemployment, representation, to welfare recipients. I just have a brief quote from his obituary, from one of the many. In addition to his extensive professional accomplishments, he was known as the mayor of Greater Boston Legal Services. Before becoming a lawyer, Brian worked at a paint factory, a magazine distributor, a hospital, and a fish market. He was a member of the editorial board of Radical America, an activist with City Life Vita Urbana, a member of the Angry Arts Film Collective, and a volunteer and staff member at Gay Community News. He was also a mensch, I will add, and he will be missed, and I ask that we keep him in our thoughts tonight.
Do we have any, Counselor Scott would like to sign on and comment?
Just, just to say that his loss is, is keenly felt and his contributions to Somerville and to labor were great. He will be very much missed, and I'm grateful for Counselor Ewan Campen sharing eloquence here. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Rosetti and Klingon would like to sign on. Are there any further moments of silence? Here are none. Please rise for a moment of silence. Please be seated and everyone please silence. I'm hearing static from somebody. Everyone please silence your phones or computers. Okay, Mr. Clerk, please read the next item.
Item number three is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 24th.
This item is laid on the table for approval. Now, before we get any further, this is a, this is going to be a very elaborate, confusing meeting. So I just wanted to take a few items out of order and kind of explain the process. And I will actually cut and paste the order that I would like to go in. And if anybody has any comments or anything, please let me know. We're going to lay items four through nine on the table, and we can all congratulate each other at the end of the meeting after we're done with our work. We're still going to take up item number 10, the public hearing for public utilities. And then after that, I'd like to take up items number 18 and 19, which are school-related items. The mayor plans on responding to those items. And then we will take up items 20, 11, and 38, which have to do with closures due to COVID. And we'll allow the mayor to respond to that as well. And then after that, take up item number 53, which will be the mayor explaining the, what we're here for tonight, basically the financial items. We will discuss and debate item 53, and then we will take up items 54 to 64, which are all financial items. After that, item number 25, which is HVAC equipment request. Item 40, the mayor would like to speak on the business fund, which is needed to deal with all these financial items. 41 through 52 are financial items as well that will go in that order. 66 is a firefighter request for money. 65 is a grant with no new match required. 12 and 15 are items from Counselor Mbah. And do any other counselors want to take any items out of order? All right, hearing no discussion, Counselor Klingon moves to take these items out of order. And we will start with the, the public hearing. Item number 10.
Mr. President, that public hearing is a public hearing on a grant of location application submitted by Verizon to install 25 feet of conduit in Washington Street from existing conduit to a point to pick up at the rear of Ford Joy Street.
All right, and now declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Please use the hand icon, and I will call on you. I currently don't see anybody, but please use the hand icon. Anyone out there? Please use the little hand icon if you have it. Not seeing anybody. Do you see anyone, Mr. Clerk?
No, I don't, Mr. President.
Okay, um, I guess hearing no comment from the public, going once, going twice, use the hand icon. Hearing no further comment, I declare this public hearing closed. Is there anyone from the council who wishes to discuss this? We can just lay this on the table, I guess, and see if someone comes to speak, and if not, take it up at the next meeting.
I, I'm, I'm, Mr. President, I'm happy to do that. This is a fairly long run that's in the, in the bicycle lane that's been installed there underneath the Washington Street Bridge. I don't see a problem with its placement there. I just want to make sure with engineering that they're going to follow a certain care when going back and repaving the surface. I'm fine proceeding however you like. If you'd rather lay it on the table to communicate to Verizon that they're expected to be at these public hearings, I'm fine with it. If you'd like to go ahead and approve it, so the the green work continues, I'm fine with that as well.
So this is your ward. Board is my ward as well, but if you would like to move to approve, I have no objection to that. I just don't want anyone to feel like they didn't get a chance to get some answers.
I'm fine, sir. I'll move to approve.
Okay, Counselor Scott moves to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, this item is laid on the table for approval. And now we're going to go to number 18 and 19. Could you read both of those, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, item 18 and 19 are both items of unfinished business. 18 is a resolution submitted by Counselor Niedergang, Davis, Ballantyne, and Strezzo that the mayor and the director of infrastructure and asset management report to this council no later than January 28, 2021, on the future of the Brown School and plans to use it in the 2021-22 school year. And item 19 is a resolution sued by Counselor Niedergang, Davis, Scott, Klingon, Ballantyne, Strezzo, Rosetti, McLaughlin, Mbah, and White that the mayor appear before this council at its meeting tonight to update the council on the status of school buildings and when they will be ready for in-person learning.
Okay, so the mayor is present to address these issues, and I should also add that we're going to talk about a number of items tonight. We'll talk about the schools. Then we're going to be talking about the rollbacks. Then we're going to be talking about money. So let's try to keep all these conversations specific. Right now, we'll talk about schools. The mayor can make his presentation, and then after that, we can deal with questions. So please hold your questions until after the presentation. Seeing no objection, Counselor Klingon moves to sponsor the mayor to speak. Mr. Mayor, you have the floor.
Good to you, Mr. President, through you to the city council. Thank you for having me present this evening and for this important discussion, to provide an update to all of you in the public on our COVID response, also as it relates to school reopenings and building adjustments to our filtration systems and other matters, and all the other budgetary matters we related to our COVID response, specifically around the KIAS Act funding and utilization of those funds in the financial requests before this evening for the relief package we have requested. Rich Raish is available, and I suggest he speak immediately following me on the COVID on the building regarding the Brown School, Mr. President. I do want to point out, and here's the agenda this evening. Items four and five, I apologize, do not reflect the order as correctly outlined by President McLaughlin. I will send the corrected slide over. I just noticed it now. So basically, items one, two, three, and flip four and five, please, my apologies for that. I do want to give first an update on school reopening. First, I do want to thank all of you on the council for supporting all our efforts to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic and all the approvals are given for the resources we need to do that and to support the community in this unprecedented time. But I also want to thank all the members of the public who unimaginably have gone through incredible stress, trauma, and uncertainty. Some have suffered loss of life of loved ones and their friends to them. I'm sure you all journey and saying how it goes out to you. Some experienced incredible amount of frustration as their livelihoods and their businesses have been slowly deteriorating. And those who like to wish to get their kids back to school, as do I. And I agree with all of them and recognize and truly acknowledge the difficulties they're all, so many of us are facing. I have, on the school reopening update, as you recall, some context. I thank the council for your approval recently of the necessary funds to upgrade our filtration systems to bring up to the necessary safety standard, which will allow us not only to help open schools, combine with our approach to surveillance or pool testing and other measures, but to cover path to the pandemic and as we open, remain open. I have some updates on that and some good news to share. First, you know, as you recall, at this point in time, we have awarded contracts to two companies, J.C. Kenestrao and T.G. Gallagher, two of the best mechanical contractors in the region, to help us achieve the goals of raising those individual school buildings up to the standards we set out based upon the assessments we made on each building and the parameters we set for certain air quality standards. Work has begun on these upgrades, and Rich Raish, who's also on this meeting, can answer any of the questions in the particulars. As you can all recall, I'm sure you all shared my disappointment at the community that the initial schedules developed by the contractors felt far short of what we were hoping to do. And they basically had the work lasting through April, and that was largely due to long lead times for equipment and materials, specifically around obtaining the MERV, M-E-R-V filters. That was at the last school committee meeting, or most recent one, where we shared that very frustrating news. You know, I will tell you from that moment and even before that public presentation, as I kept President McLaughlin others informed, we worked tirelessly and used every avenue possible to try to change that timeline. So last week, we, we worked aggressively. The city did what the contractors and suppliers across the country to reduce the lead times for the most critical elements of the filters. I do want to, at this point, thank John Fish, who's the CEO of Suffolk Construction. They're the company, if you recall, of building high school. We went to them and I asked them, you know, with your national contacts, is there any opportunity or possibility that there might be a vendor who has a necessary supplier that can help us shave this timeline down? The bottom line is, we were successful in sourcing fillers, reducing the lead times from what was most recently eight to 12 weeks, which was originally according to now just two to three weeks. So we have shaved weeks off that lead time for these important materials. Filters have already started arriving here in Somerville, and we anticipate most of all will be here by the end, this month, the end of this calendar year. So based on this new development, the contractors are now revising their schedules. And which is our infrastructure and asset management team is working closely with Mary Skipper and the Public Schools Department to determine when we can occupy each school. I feel very confident today to say to all of you in the public, the last presentation, the last timeline we set out, which brought us into April, we can set that aside right now. We had meetings yesterday and today, we meaning Rich Raish's team and members of the school department to meet with each individual contractor to understand and find out the finite decisions on the priority of the work. And we will have, we are currently developing a new schedule, which we feel very confident, we reflect what we originally have put out, not the last one, which will bring us much closer into January and perhaps some other good news on the back end of the schedule. So again, based on this new information, which is really good news, and we got the most recent update this afternoon, we are currently revising that schedule. We hope to present that no later than Monday night at the school committee meeting. And we can give the most accurate timeline, which will certainly now help the public schools and the school department meet their educational goals of, again, the most high priority need is in. So in terms of occupancy, again, again, it's useful to just clarify once again what we're doing in the schools. One, we are approving the filtration, upgrading the filters to a certain filter, MERV 13, to remove aerosols from the air. We, again, thank you to the council for approving those measures and that investment, and we are improving ventilation that brings fresh air into the classroom. So to achieve really both of those things, we need to recommission the, all of the air handling equipment of buildings to ensure it's really functioning properly, even with the increased pressures created by the new finer filters. And we're also installing CO2 monitors to walk the buildings to be sure that the systems continue to bring in fresh air, as we described previously and operate as designed. And all of that is really critical work that must be completed to achieve our threshold for occupancy. So in addition to that, we are adding UV disinfection and humidification wherever possible. So this is work to further reduce transmission risk, but it, but it is not critical to complete before occupancy. So we believe we can reach that standard range we have set out and spoke about publicly and continue to drive it down to an even higher safety standard. This approach is really consistent with guidance published by the Harvard School of Public Health as well and our consultants. So at this point in time, again, when we kept the contractors and Rich's team at infrastructure asset management, the public schools are working through a detailed scheduling effort to make spaces available as quickly as possible to priority students, and those are highest needs, while minimizing travel for families and future disruption. The school department's work on how that rolls out is dependent on getting the accurate and final timeline from the city, which we are very confident that we need a much better timeline as we originally anticipated. And in today, yesterday and today's work and engagement with the contractors confirmed that. So there are a lot of moving parts admittedly, and we will publish the plan as soon as possible. We want our information to be accurate, but our goal is hopefully be able to describe in greater detail on Monday night's school committee meeting. So I, I think I should stop there. Mr. President, taking any questions? And Rich Raish may want to add to what I said, and I possibly ask him to invite you to talk about the Brown School. Any questions on that now?
All right, do we have any questions from the council? We got Counselor Niedergang.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Raish for being here and for this, this welcome information. The question that I have, there's been a lot of concern, primarily from staff, but from some parents as well, about how do we know that the school buildings are really safe? So a lot of cities and towns have set community thresholds and then broken those community thresholds. So those, to me, don't seem like a valid measure of whether schools should be open or not. If that isn't a kind of objective measuring point, what, what is exactly? So how will the city, the administration, the board of health make it clear to parents and staff that the school buildings are safe for in-person learning? If these thresholds that a lot of cities and towns have used for community spread don't really seem to be accurate or relevant measures, what, what measures are there that can assure the parents and the staff that being in the buildings is safe? Thank you.
Through you, Mr. President, to Counselor Niedergang, thank you for the question. And that's one of the valid questions that comes up. And I think you rightly point out, having one bright line is not accurate. We've seen where that has failed. It's typically an arbitrary number. It is complex in terms of the analysis. Let me try to set and clarify how we're approaching it. One, I don't know in any other community, and I'm proud to say in the Commonwealth, that's approaching the safety standards as we have, setting the filtration systems to a standard, high standard, and Rich can go into that detail as you have approved the financing for, as well as all the other internal factors which we have put in place, your typically typical safety protocols around levels of hygiene, social distancing, mask wearing. And then the other internal factor is the testing program we'll be implementing, sort of level of really, I wouldn't say, you know, screen testing or surveillance testing, where we're testing every member of the staff twice a week and every student once a week. In fact, that was part of a panel, the City of Somerville, along with Tosh University, City of Metz, who's part of that project with Tufts, and Salem and Wellesley will have some form of cool testing approach, and there is none to the level of what we're doing here in Somerville. So in short, you bring up a good point, because when people talk about, and I've asked the same questions, these are valid questions to parents, while we've seen other school districts where there haven't been cases either around the world, or in the United States, or in the Commonwealth. As was explained to me, and I'll try to explain clearly here, the details matter. One, everything has to be set against the backdrop of community spread, which I think we'd all agree is not trending in the wrong direction by accelerating. Two, you need to understand fully how the pandemic is evolving, not just in the community. And when you pick a bright line around community spread, and I believe you're alluding to this, Counselor Niedergang, it tells you how the pandemic is operating around the community. Our approach will tell us real time how the pandemic is evolving within the school, and it will allow us that real time information to strategically contain any outbreak of cases conceivably even by the classroom or by a section of the school versus what we see a lot of communities having to do is still continuing on this whack-a-mole approach where they've had to close whole school or schools. When we, if we pick an arbitrary number just in the community, we may unnecessarily be closing schools. So the goal, if you recall, is to do all these things, working as part of the details in sequence with one another. So as we gauge the external factors on our community spread, also which, how the level of contact tracing is effective or ineffective and contributing to that, or the availability of testing and so forth, we still have a tool, an approach that arguably could allow us to cover path to that remain open, whereas in any other case, you'd be stuck closing and not be able to remain open when you could. Now, this is important to explain this to the public. We've had some presentation. We continue to do that, as well as other stakeholders, teachers, staff. Because we, we want, we believe we're taking an approach to achieve the highest level of safety, but we want to make sure we gain their confidence and credibility. So I know that's a long-winded answer, but there's a lot of moving parts when we, and I wish there was just a simple measurement for all of us, but I think we can understand why not, because the details do matter. And I think we've, we've put together a very detailed, thorough, deliberate approach to allow us to, once we get our kids back in school, to remain open. So I hope that answered the question. I don't know if Rich Raish would like to add to that.
Mr. President, I'd like a follow-up.
Would you like that before Rich speaks?
I, I can wait till if he has something to add.
Okay, Rich, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. The mayor summed it up exactly right. And there's the Swiss cheese model, right? There's various levels of interference between viral spread. And each one of those things, the, the testing, the PPE, ventilation, they all add up, and we have sweated the details on each one of them. And in terms of the, of the ventilation, we didn't take a, a simple approach by putting fans in windows and hoping for the best. We are completely recommissioning all of the ventilation systems in these buildings to assure that they are right back up to the full capacity that they had and are pushing air the way that they're supposed to and accommodating the new filters. Where we'll have a retro commissioning report from that to assure that these things are functioning correctly. In addition to that, we're, we're implementing carbon dioxide monitoring. So we will continually go back, and this is essentially quality control to make sure that the ventilation continues to operate in the way that we want it to. And you know, that's an example of sweating the details on the ventilation and on the testing, on the PPE, on the social distancing. We've sweated the details on, on all of those items. So there's a high degree of confidence in the overall plan.
And Counselor Niedergang?
Thank you, Mr. President. So that, that all sounds really good to me. The question I still have, and I think the testing system that's been worked out, it seems to have worked very well at Tufts. It seems to be a really, a good way to approach this. The question that I have is, so students and teachers are being tested. How do, how do we know? How does a community know? How will the administration know? How will the schools know? What number of positive tests would require a shutdown or a change in the plan? Where are the, where are the kind of relative measures on that? It seems like a really good approach. I think that people would like to know at what point, given what the testing yields, do you change course or limit, you know, students in the school? Thank you.
Counselor Ballantyne, has a comment on this point? Or was there a response to that?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would say I, I still have the same question as Counselor Niedergang does, is I understand the process, but you haven't shared who's going to be looking at all this information and making the call. Oh, we gotta, we gotta change course here. We are, we've got to close the school down. It's, to me, I understand the process, but I don't know really what numbers you are looking at when you look at the whole picture. There might be different numbers for each one of the points that you mentioned on air filtration, the PPE, you know, the so I, I still have the same question that Counselor Niedergang has. You know, at what point?
If I may, thank you. I'm happy to ask that. I know Mr. Bukili would also jump in, but first let me say in terms of who and the problem makes the decision, we'll be looking at all that information and data. We are forming a school COVID advisory committee. They'll be made up from members of the community and school and city staff, but members of the community with, with a background and expertise. And we've got some credible candidates. We'll be announcing that, I, I believe, hopefully tomorrow, if not by Monday at the latest. Just to remember the top of my head, we will be looking at the information real time. They will make an advisory recommendation to the superintendent myself, since it intersects between education and public health all combined, obviously. But I know Mr. Bukili wanted to chime in on top of what I was answering, if you may. And he's the head of the ICS.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. To, if I understood the questions correctly, through you to Counselors Ballantyne and Niedergang. When it comes to testing and being aware of individuals who may be positive, the way the classes will be structured is by cohort. So each cohort, pegged very closely to that, will be a pool of tests. So at any positive that may arise in that pool, individuals will be tested individually using a, a PCR test now. And the positives will be either isolated and the, the exposed individuals will be quarantined. So it works, or it's supposed to work by group instead of having to shut down entire sections. Now, if multiple pools start coming back positive, depending on where they are, if they had, if they've had any contact, it would give you a potential indication through contact tracing that there may be transmission happening within the school building. Can't give you an exact number, maybe two cohorts, maybe three cohorts would have to shut down the buildings. It would depend on the information that we would get from contact tracing. If it becomes something that is widespread to, let's say, multiple positives over two, three, four, five consecutive weeks, that is, for example, an indication of pretty serious transmission. It may be happening in the buildings, contact tracing would have to validate that. And if we can't validate it, then we would work for the advisory group in order to make recommendations to the mayor and superintendent.
The other thing, if I may, Mr. President, I know I forgot to mention is, you know, all the data now and for the selected metrics will be publicly available on the SPS COVID, Somerville Public Schools COVID dashboard as well. I, I neglected to mention that earlier. And I believe Kristen still just presented on the cool testing approach and how we evaluate different metrics in combination with one another is on the call as well. And she, Kristen, you wanted to add to what we said? Maybe she's not on the call, I thought she was.
Kristen, you here? Hope I heard somebody.
She is not connected as a panelist, unfortunately.
I don't see her as an attendee either. Okay.
Mr. President, that answers my question. This is Counselor Niedigang. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are you all set, Counselor Ballantyne?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I have Counselor Rosetti and Counselor Ba.
Mr. President, I just wanted, later on this evening, one of the items on the agenda is my reporting out the most recent Somerville High School Building Committee meeting. And part of that report was going to explain that we are hoping, we are hopeful as of the meeting that we had on the 14th, that the certificate of occupancy will be issued January 4th for Somerville High. So we had extensive conversation around that. I urged the superintendent to take the lead and to do what was needed to make January doable for education for students that, of parents who are begging for us to, to do this for their children. And I, the school is large. The school has brand new equipment in it. The city recently hired the green building manager that will start first and foremost at Somerville High School's building. Ralph Martin is his name. So I wanted you all to be aware of that, that the superintendent was hopeful that if the COO was issued for January 4th, that perhaps January 11th could be the date where our staff and students could enter. And she is working with the project people now on arranging that her staff can start entering the building now under strict guidance by the fire department and the Suffolk team so that things can start to be put into place for that. And this would mean not just Somerville High School students.
Hey, well, thank you for that update. Counselor Ba?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good to see you. Thank, I was, I want to thank Counselor Niedigang for asking all those good questions. And also, thank you, Counselor Rosetti. I have a bunch of questions here, but I guess I'll just ask for one because I want to get clarity, you know, from the mayor, how fair and equitable this, this reopening plan has been? Because I, I still haven't gotten a lot of clear indication when kids with special needs will return. Is that, is that something that, you know, it's still in the air or is that something that would happen, you know, as soon as possible? Because as you can tell, like, there's just been a crop of diversity. And so we need to ensure that as we are trying to, you know, do all these different dynamics to reopen, the baseline should be fair and equitable. Can you speak to that?
Yes, to you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor Ba, for the question. Sorry, I missed your call earlier. So yes, we fully recognize, you know, this pandemic has put a glaring spotlight on what is unjust and inequitable about our entire system. The families and people and kids who are suffering the most, our black and brown community, our immigrants, the poor people who are health, health, health outcomes, and educationally, those who are suffering more, those with the highest need students, notwithstanding what their race is, but certainly not vulnerable populations even more for a variety of reasons. And I can assure you as one member of the school committee, that is the highest priority. I, as I, and I need to clarify further, as I mentioned earlier, I feel a lot better and very confident that we're gonna, we are not going to be, have to deal with the timeline we put last week. Based on the information today, if Rachel may want to supplement what I mentioned here, we're going to be able to get those kids back sooner than we thought about a week ago, or two weeks ago. And hopefully we'll have, I feel we'll have that timeline. Our goal is by Monday night to the school committee. And I assure, I assure you that is the goal of the entire school department, school committee, and myself. I know all of you in the community. And it'll be, it's all effort to get those kids back first, as well as get all their kids eventually. But we know the highest needs kids, those who need the greatest amount of service, have to be prioritized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rich?
Thank you to the President. That's exactly right. And those are the, the details that we're sweating right now with Somerville Public Schools, with, with Mary Skipper and all of her staff. The, the, there is an order of priority for students, high need, special needs, special needs, English language learners, but pre-K and K. There's an order in which ideally we bring the, the students back in. And we're trying to line up the buildings that would most support each one of those programs. And also then minimize the transportation needs so that families aren't moving all around the city. And then also, as other buildings are coming online and as other grades are coming online in their, their succession, again, you know, like, like first and second grade, then it's the next priority, that we're not then moving classes around. So we're, we're, we're working with the contractors, with the Somerville Public Schools to really devise a plan that, that gets the, the kids in the buildings in order of need, but also mitigates all those other factors that really impact families. And, and we're looking at all the buildings as Counselor Rosetti pointed out, the new high school is very much in play, particularly as it's being the first one coming online. And how can we use that for the, the high need special ed and ELL and even the, the little guys? So that's exactly the details that we're working through right now.
Thank you. To you, Mr. President. Thank you, Rich. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll see you soon.
All right, we've got Counselor Strezow and Counselor Ballantyne.
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, I, I was going to ask about, because I'm interested in, and I mean, I'm going to go to Counselor Rosetti's point about opening the schools and, I'm sorry, opening the high school and the possibility of it happening really soon. One issue that comes up a lot in the children's cabinet is out of school time. And with the high school opening, is there the possibility of extra space for either out of school time for children in the district? But also, I think that Director Rach had talked about the outdoor classrooms being used for other schools that can't have the capacity to open, such as the Brown School. So could we talk about that? And do you have any insight onto the direction of where that's going?
Yes, thank you to you, Mr. President, to Counselor Strezow, Stuttenrich, I don't know if you wanted to add in. We are examining just that. Also, we, I believe, just approved a proposal to assist and aid in how we can use even buildings before they're fully adjusted for even short time period experts to help with out of school time as we are now and as we can all notice today in the inclement weather season. And so we'll have more to come that, or the next, you know, soon to be announced by the school district. We're working closely with them and a whole lot of school time effort. So we're exploring just that. And any opportunity to use any section of the building or assets that we have to expand upon that, even at minimal capacity. Rich, if you want to add to it. So we expect more information made public at the beginning of the week. But we continue to explore all those avenues. We know we have to invest more in out of school time. We have to be more creative given the circumstances now that we in the winter season.
We're currently looking at all those spaces, not just for the school time, but for after school time. And the gyms and the cafeterias at each one of the schools are high value real estate for, for those purposes.
Is there a timeline? Mr. President, to you too, Director.
That's one of the, one of the other things that we're working through right now is the timeline. So I, we don't have a solid timeline on that yet. I'm hoping to have a lot of clarity on that, be able to make some announcements at the next school committee. And certainly by the end of the year, we'll have a, a plan fleshed out.
If I also add, Mr. President, to that, for the counselor, we are exploring even avenues outside of our building assets within the community as well and partnerships and some great ideas coming from advocates and folks in the community. We appreciate them and keep them coming in yourself. We appreciate that as well. So we will, we, as we get more opportunities, we'll announce them and build upon that scaffold as much as possible. We won't stop.
Thank you.
All right, I got a little feedback from people too. So again, everyone, please move yourself when you're not speaking. Is there anyone else, any other questions about schools? There are no questions. I do have a question because we have an appropriation for the HVAC system today. And we previously approved HVAC money. So I'm just wondering, are we paying twice for this? Is this a newer version or what? Why are we having a second appropriation for HVAC equipment?
Thank you, Mr. President. So when, when we appropriated out of the stabilization funds, we pointed out that the overall budget for this work is $7.5 million. The intent was to use $3 million from the CARES Act, which did not require city council action. And then $3 million out of the COVID-19 stabilization and 1.5 out of the building stabilization funds. Where, and, and there are timeframe and strings attached to the CARES funding. As we're sitting right now, it does not look like we're going to be able to, to get that full $3 million out of the CARES money. So this appropriation in the amount of 2.5 is to hedge our bets against what we're not going to be able to get out of the CARES Act. So, you know, right now, my, my estimate is that we'll likely get around half a million out of CARES, which is why the other 2.5 to add up for three is a bond appropriation. I'm hoping not to have to go all the way to that 2.3, but we want to make the, our 2.5 rather. We need to make the appropriation now so that we can sign the contracts and have the funding available and in place.
Okay, I see Mr. Bean here. Did you have something to add to this?
The point, Mr. President, which we'll discuss a little bit later, is that the CARES Act expires on December 30th. And the restrictions being imposed by the federal government is that money be out the door by December 30th. So even if we sign a contract, money has to be out the door and the benefits realize. This is an undue, undue restriction upon us all, making it very, very difficult to, to operate. So it's, it's necessary just to keep things going to put forward the borrowing appropriation so that we don't have any leg whatsoever in, in the work that Mr. Rach and the partners are doing.
And, Mr. President, and so, you know, this is, this is information. And we've been given, not only Somerville, but every municipality in the Commonwealth is given back to our federal delegation as well as the federal government. There's also, I'll speak to in a few, in a few slides later about some of the frustrations, even with the Commonwealth of Master Chiefs, it's for all of us as municipalities on the interpretation of the CARES Act and how it's been extremely rigid.
Okay, thank you for that answer. Counselor Niedigang, no one else had any questions? He had a question about the Brown School, if we could have a response about their reopening plan?
Thank you, Mr. President, to, to Counselor Ballantyne and Niedigang, and I think maybe Davis and Strezow. So the, the types of things that we're doing, the other schools, the Brown School doesn't have the systems that allow us to do that. The, the extent of the renovations that need to be done at the Brown are far more extensive. So what we're looking at is the feasibility and, and what the cost would be for a, a fuller renovation of that. Also knowing that that sort of renovation would trigger ADA compliance and a whole litany of long overdue deferred maintenance at that building. We are bringing in an architectural consultant to do that evaluation. It's the same architectural consultant that we are bringing onboard to do the, the same sort of evaluations of City Hall, the 1895 building and, and a number of others. We are finalizing the scope with them. I think we probably hash through the, the final details on that scope this week. So I, I hope to be able to sign that contract in the next couple of weeks. And then we would launch that effort to, to evaluate the building. There, there is and there should be a complimentary effort on the Somerville Public School side in enrollment study. Because certainly our, how we use that building and how much we have to renovate that is different. If we are simply replicating essentially the 12 classes that we need, if the enrollment citywide implies that we need more than, than maybe there's other things that need to be done on that site or, or location. So that is all work that's essentially going to start in January and move as quickly as possible. With an eye both to the long term and then also interim recommendations for the 2021, 2022 school year, which in the worst case, we could extend the lease on the mods again to give a swing space, which has, you know, about 17 classrooms in it. So in a, in a worst case scenario, we could do something in a stopgap for one additional year. But I think it's a little bit too early to speculate on exactly what those conclusions are. But that's kicking off immediately.
All right, I have Counselor Cligan and Counselor Davis.
If Counselor Davis's question or comment is on the Brown School stuff, I'll let him go because I actually, I missed my opportunity. I had a question, a follow-up to your question, Mr. President, so.
Davis, is this on the Brown School?
It is, Mr. President.
You're on the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Director Rach, for that. So I guess, so I understand, so that, I mean, you, you're talking about, you know, I think you've said sort of like the worst case scenario for 21, 22 is you're talking about the mods. But I mean, is, is our thinking that we won't be back to a time because of COVID where we, you know, so let me take a step back. I fully support ideas to do something with the Brown School. There's been a number of conversations over many years. I've introduced items in this council to try and, you know, move those along and make sure that we have institutional memory. Despite the turnover in parents and, and, you know, parent teacher council membership and all that. There was when my kids were there, there was a, a significant movement to sort of try and have this conversation. And at the time, actually, Matt Rice, the architect who's worked on the high school and whose son was one of my son's classmates, put together some really interesting ideas, using the, you know, using the, the schoolyard as a potential addition to, to address compliance, compliance and access throughout the building. And there's a whole bunch, a whole bunch of thought on it. And so that's all great, but that's years in the making or will be years down the road, you know, even if we start today. It, it is the thought that kids can never go back to that school regardless of whether, where we are with the, the COVID crisis until we've done some big project or, you know, is, is the reason, is the reason you're talking about 21, 22 because we still think there's
is, is the reason, is the reason you're talking about 21, 22, because we still think there's going to be concern with COVID-19 out there?
Yeah, that, that's, that's essentially it. But you know, that, that's, that's the new and different thing about being able to, you know, just utilize it the way it's been utilized. Is, is where will we be in terms of COVID in, in September, 2021?
If I may add, Mr. President, as well, I mean, we all agree, I think we'll know as we get in the late spring towards the summer and what impacts of blunting, what's happening in the vaccine. And we're going to be living with the virus will be with us, but what levels will transmission rate can be driven down to? It's not out of the question that we can be in there. And I hope, I pray we're not what we're seeing now. I think we all do and, and there's promise for what's happening. But that'll give it, we'll have better clarity as we hit the spring on that, I'd submit.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to, to hear that, to make sure we were all clear on the same page, you know, because I, I certainly am hopeful. You're having seen, you know, you mentioned where we are, another vaccine approved today. Obviously, we're, we're many, 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 many months from, from being to the point where we have enough folks vaccinated for that to, to make a material difference. But given, you know, given the data on kids in the, you know, first through fifth grade or K through fifth grade age group, you know, it certainly doesn't seem out of the question to me. In fact, I would, if I had to bet, I would bet that it's more likely than not that by September of 21, our numbers here in Massachusetts and Seminole where we are doing as many of the right things as we can will be such that we're very comfortable sending kids back into that building in that age bracket. You know, even with some windows open or whatever the case may be, if, you know, as, as a, as a last piece of Swiss cheese on top, right? I, I, you know, I want to make sure that's not ruled out because to me that seems like the most likely scenario. We're not going to have a, you know, a new building built. We're not going to have a renovation done. We're not going to have, you know, and frankly, I'd be surprised if we have even a plan at that stage. You know, I'm glad to hear that we're moving forward with that. And as I said, it's a long time coming. It's long overdue. And for, for all the reasons, right? I get that there's a million other things we're working on, but I just want to make sure that's still very much at the forefront of, of a, a distinct possibility that kids will go back to the Brown in September next year and everything will be fine. And then we can talk about, and then in, in parallel, we can be talking about the future of that facility. And, you know, and whether it's, you know, among the ideas, as I said, are, you know, an addition that in the schoolyard, public taking of the, the switching facility that's down Willow as an annex, whatever, right? I mean, there's all, all the other options on the table, but I appreciate you, you know, hearing that indeed we're all still thinking that we, there's a good, a good chance and we hope the kids will be back in the building.
For you, Mr. President, I'm not going to bet against you because I want to win on this with you. So we are not dismissing that possibility. Yeah, so we're going to be cautiously optimistic and do that work, as you mentioned, is, is, is good to do. We need to do it anyway. And yeah, we're going to be deliberating and hopefully we'll have the, what we halt pray when, and these experts say may probably happen. Let's get results by the summer and see where that is. So we're not going to dismiss that possibility at all. No, we'll not hope that that's going to be the case that we'll have. We'll be back there at some point.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Council Cligan?
Thank you, Mr. President, through, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a question on your response to Councilman McLaughlin's question about the funds. It was said that we're going to lose the CARES Act money because we haven't signed a contract yet. Just curious, like, why haven't we, we signed a contract yet?
The point of clarification, President, what Director Bean said is that signing the contract is not the prerequisite. Is it, it, the labor actually has to be expended, invoiced and worked in place in order to be eligible for the CARES Act. Which is vastly different from, you know, what one would expect. Available to this funding today.
Yeah, that's, I mean, pretty rigid. All right, thank you for that clarification.
And it's a change, Mr. President, for you. It's, it's been changing. It's been a moving target, very frustrating. I'm going to touch upon another slide and Ed's team and Kate Hocke and others have been working with the administration of finance of the Governor's Office of Administration of Finance. I tell you, Massachusetts is doing very rigid.
Mr. President, we're describing this as a juggling act because that's literally what we've had to do is, you know, look for different funds here and there, given all of these restrictions. It's been very difficult to plan.
All right, do we have any more questions on school items? There are no further discussion unless anyone objects, I'm going to lay these two items on the table for approval. And we'll go on, where are we going next, Mr. Clerk? We're going to go to items 18, no, that's 20, 11 and 38. We're going to talk about the rollbacks. If you could read all three of the 20, 11 and 38, if you could read all three of those items.
Mr. President, item number 20 is a resolution sued by Councilor Niedergang, Davis, Scott, Kling and Valentine, Strezzo, Rosetti, McLaughlin, Mbah and White, that the mayor appear before this council tonight to update the council regarding COVID-19 restrictions and policies in light of the increased spread of the disease. Item 11 is an order submitted by Councilor Valentine that the Director of Finance update this council at its meeting on the financial health of the city, including CARES funds updates. And item 38, I will pull up in a minute, but item 38 is an order submitted by Councilor Valentine that the Director of Health and Human Services advise this council at his tonight meeting that metrics, what metrics are being used to determine closure of the recreation sector? And then advise which sectors are allowed to be open.
Okay, I'd like to give the mayor the floor here to continue the presentation and then open it up to questions on any of these items or any comments he makes. Mr. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. These next series of slides hopefully address, then I'll, and then I'll pause for questions. Next slide, Kusko. So obviously, just to frame the conversation, give context, we, we know it's no surprise that following this cases by state as of December 16th, 49 places with the highest COVID-19 risk level. We, we've already well past the threshold of resurgence. Next slide, hey, we are, you know, as was stated by experts and it's clear we are headed into the darkest days of this pandemic.
Excuse me, Mr. President, there are no slides up.
All right, can we go back and, can we go back one slide then? Let me see, can we go back one slide? Kusko, whoever's doing this slide? Okay, I'm sorry about that and I'll start again. So as I started, this certainly illustrates what we are all aware of that, you know, almost the entire country is at the highest risk of our COVID-19 risk level. We are well past the threshold of resurgence. Next slide. The, we are, as I mentioned, we have well into the darkest days of this pandemic. Cases are increasing across the state and at accelerating rate. As of yesterday, the statewide daily average incident rate is now over 65 cases per 100,000 residents. Next slide. You know, the, this is the percent positivity here in the Commonwealth. It's the seven day weighted average of percent of tests by minutes illustrated as of Wednesday, the 16th. Next slide. What has been made clear to us and the data supports, and as I say, us as a, in constant conversations with municipal officials around the region and the state and with other state officials and health experts, the healthcare system is showing signs of strain as a hospitalizations increase. I mean, the good news is, I mean, the healthcare profession, we, and we all, and they better understand how to treat COVID and save lives. But we still need to take action to prevent the healthcare system from becoming overwhelmed. And frankly, people still becoming ill and we still have deaths. So our, you know, we, you know, we still need to ensure that everyone who needs treatment, whether they're COVID or another ailment, can access the care they need. So at the beginning of the pandemic, to recall, it was about flattening, flattening out the curve and maintaining the stability of the healthcare system. Right now, the state is setting up surge hospitals. More beds are certainly important. But what had been made clear to us by many hospital CEOs is a concern about staff and that we may be running short of staff. It's clear hospital staff are tired and exhausted and many are sick and the caseloads are only growing. In the first surge, people came, you call from across the country to help in the northeast areas where there was trend, where there are high rates of our cases and transmission and hospitalizations were at the brink. But the fire is burning everywhere right now, as we all know, and there's no cavalry coming. So we're approaching what appears to be capacited across the health hospital system as a whole. And we're all working collectively to avoid a situation where the healthcare staff need to prioritize some patient over others. Those are imaginable moral decisions to have to make, but we know from lessons around the world. What happens when you have to, you're stuck making those decisions? We've seen that especially in northern Italy, which is one of the best healthcare systems in all of Europe. This slide certainly shows the deaths now were over 11,000 members of our community in the Commonwealth that passed away in Seminole 50. You know, I, I'm bewildered by when I see this, as we all should be and ask ourselves how much death that we willing to tolerate as a society? Deaths and this numbers, you know, typically follow a little lag behind the actual cases. And I, I just want to go, and on that slide on the deaths, let me just say, as we just talked about hospitalizations, it's important that we make painfully clear, it's important to have capacity in our hospital system. But what that guarantees is that we may have an ICU bed or ventilated few, which is important. But if we want to avoid what we're seeing in the next slide, the deaths, and we can go back to that, then we need to avoid people become seriously ill. If we want to avoid that, then we need to interrupt the transmission from person to person. And that's important context for understanding how we're trying to make decisions. As it relates to Seminole, our average daily incident rate through today can be depicted here right on 46.10. And this is in the incident rate per 100,000 over the last 14 days. This number is certainly gone up and you can see how it relates in comparison to both Middlesex and Suffolk County and the Commonwealth. Percent positivity rate at the same time is ticking up. As you can see, last, over the last 14 days, 1.68%. Go to the next slide. We have been very proactive collectively. We thank for the support and pretend doing everything we can to protect the health of our community. But I think we can all agree, at best we have in the region is this patchwork approach. And we know we cannot put up walls around our city alone to keep the virus out. So we're not immune. It's painfully obvious to the increases in positive cases that we're seeing somewhere in the world, the nation, the Commonwealth or around the region. We, Seminole, we all know the most densely populated community in New England. We live in one of the most densely populated regions in the nation and a very mobile society. You recall seeing the heat map, I showed you at a previous meeting. Just to note, the intensity of the, of the red indicates the highest densities within each month. And does not necessarily represent the same density value as the highest density in a different month. But for illustration, here's where we're at in March. And next slide, and you know, these maps of cases across the city by month clearly demonstrate that the virus disproportionately impacts some areas more than others. We realize that, and so the next slide. And we can see how that continues into the fall. And as we're heading into the cold and flu season, the fall months and more indoor activity, ignore the next slide. And you see how it's only intensifying disproportionately in those parts of our city. Another next slide.
That noise coming from you or is that somebody else? I'm hearing like it's happening.
All right, that might be me, I'm sorry.
Just to make sure no one's not muted, go ahead, sorry.
I apologize. On the, in relation to our important, just to remind everyone, our, our response to COVID. Next slide, should be slide 20. We establish, if you recall, I mentioned this, but it's a point in mind everyone, the incident command system structure. The ICS was established in March of 2020. We were, we mobilized to do this because we looking at trends around the world and, and what would happen in the nation. Try to understand how we would respond as a community pandemic. When we did this with the assistance of emerging, of an emergency preparedness consultant, the Ready Zone HQ nationally, an internationally recognized consultant. This chart illustrates really just a fraction of over 150 city staff involved in emergency response. And the ICS is this type of structures are nationally recognized model and proven best practice for emergency disaster response. And it's really allowed us to rapidly set and implement planning and management functions to deliver a, not only a rapid, but adaptable and coordinating systemic emergency response. So I do want to commend our entire city staff, everyone who've been going above and beyond meet their substantive duties and required duties or charged duties every single day for the past 10 months. And I want to state clearly, in one organization, the people in the organization have been doing the work for two, for almost a year now. And I'm sure you'll join me in thanking them for their, their hard efforts. Keep the community safe. Next slide, and actually let's move on to some, talk about why we need to the question, a COVID-19 budget. If you recall and clarify, so there are two main external funding sources, CARES Act and FEMA's Public Assistance Program. You know, I'm outlining the challenges here, you know, we just mentioned the expiring, related funding expiring. Although we are attempting, we are advocating along with other municipalities, not just in Massachusetts, but around the country to have that deadline extended or adjusted. And there's been really no consistency in reliable reliability in the source of funding. As much as it's helped, it hasn't been totally adequate for all the expenses that are occurring throughout the crisis. Right now, there's about, oh, this lays out the CARE Act expenses, what was finally projected as of this week, right now, there's about 1.78 million made to spend. And as we've mentioned in this, just a few minutes ago, we're hitting walls, trying to spend funds. And we're not the only ones, other municipalities are echoing problems I'll mention here. So as we stated, there's a need to extend the deadline to expand because cities and towns need the flexibility. As they work with FEMA, for example, to get the cost approved and as they work to spend the money on school and city building improvements. As I stated earlier, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Administration of Finance has a very rigid interpretation of the CARES Act funding. Let me give you two example. Federal guidance, for example, allows support for small businesses, including artists. In Massachusetts, the Commonwealth is not allowing this, but the city of Boston is, and here's why. There are three recipients of CARES funds money here in Massachusetts, Vonnstable County, it is a county, the city of Boston and the rest of us fall under the umbrella of the Commonwealth. The city of Boston accepted Section 5 of the federal CARES Act, which allows them to support small businesses, including artists with this funding. So we have a half million dollars we designated to support artists in addition to what, what we've been doing that's just sitting there. Federal guidance also allows for the recover example of payroll costs for health and first responder staff spending time on COVID work. Commonwealth of Massachusetts is not allowing this. You know, the state is also moving slowly on responding to concerns and questions. So for example, we waited weeks for input on how to structure rental assistance programs, which delayed getting these dollars out the door. You may have heard these stories over and over in other communities. And we've been seeking, for example, clearer guidance on costs just sent out today on what FEMA versus CARES Act each fund. So it's been a lot of, it's bureaucracy, but it's also bewildering that the Commonwealth has such a rigid interpretation. So we're working with regional partners and other agents, others across the Commonwealth to address this or have it addressed. And we're also brought it to our attention of our state delegation, also our federal delegation. And hope we can get some flexibility on that and extension on time we need. Next slide, please. I do this as for the summary of the appropriations of the COVID budget from January 1st to March 31st, 2021. Next slide, so as our COVID response as it relates to the most rollbacks, most recently openable back and emergency relief. Do a few more slides and pause for questions. Next slide. Most recently, as you all know, municipalities, including Seminole, have announced, we saw rollbacks, our rollbacks. And we joined communities like Boston, Lynn, Brockton, Newton and Arlington. And I, as we're speaking tonight, I know the city of Salem, Health, Board of Health is voting on the same measure. I will tell you, there've been attempts by many other municipalities with different forms of government, smaller towns with selectmen and so forth, where the CEO and town administrators and managers see the need, saw where the CEO and town administrators and managers see the need, saw the need for this, have been advocating for it, and they've been shut down. And really, it's been a consequence of the abdication of the government of the state for not working with municipalities and our coordinated regional approach. And the common theme we got back from those frustrated administrators is our communities saying, well, if the governor says it's safe, it must be safe. And it's been frustrating because I did fully admit, and I'm not gonna, I don't want to diminish the significance because it was not insignificant what we've done so far. It's important, but we are trying to work within this bigger framework of a region because we know we can't all do it alone. So more communities are poised to follow, are working to follow, and we are working collectively with them. I chair the Metropolitan Miss Coalition, which are the fifteen communities within the Boston's inner core. But we're also working with the North Shore Coalition and cities out in Metro West to try to for, you know, you know, form a formidable response to lengthen, you know, or reverse the surge. Because we're on our own Commonwealth, it's left it to us to quote unquote have at it. As of the end of the day yesterday, I want to make clear and clarify the following business activities has been outlined here, paused in the city of Somerville. And mostly indoor activities such as fitness center, health clubs. There are some exceptions as outlined here. Other indoor non-athletic instructional classes, but this is for persons eighteen years or older. And certain other recreational, indoor recreational athletic facilities, except for those youth activities and so forth. Next slide, please. The following activities had been allowed by the state, but were never allowed open in the city. If you recall, a week ago, Governor Baker announced that the state was rolling back to three point one. Well, you know, that was incremental at best. My statement publicly is you can't take baby steps against a pandemic that's overwhelming us. And some of them haven't even reached the full extent of three point one, and I don't believe Cambridge or I'm not sure if so Boston did. But, you know, municipalities, I want to state to you, and I understand you don't have the benefit of the public does to be in this bubble of all of us trying to, our conversations and working together and understanding the need to have a well-integrated coordinated regional plan, but municipalities in the region continue to discuss and work at additional rollbacks, including indoor dining, because they are necessary. The activities rolling back are ones that are in certain phases of the open plan later, usually because they pose the highest risk of transmission. And, you know, I freely admit, and we all recognize as municipal leaders that to have the greatest health impact in the midst of this resurgence. And experts agree that indoor dining should be closed across the state. If the state neglects the act, this policy decision needs to be implemented regionally, not town by town. To this point throughout this pandemic, we haven't had. I mean, it's been clear, the Commonwealth has been clear, they're not going to tell individual municipalities what to do, that each municipality should do what's best, they think is best beyond the basic guidelines they've given us, but we've seen this fail across the nation is admittedly, and the president was just fighting against the reality and the science of the pandemic, but telling states to do it. You know, pushing it on states and they just push it on municipalities and even school districts to figure out reopening isn't working. So if you can just cross the city line to eat in the community next door, for example, and it applies to any, admittedly to some of the other services that we closed, border hopping will only spur community spread of the virus, and we are very cognizant of this. So these are all tremendously painful policy decisions to consider. I want to make clear, there is no there is no defaulting. It's a false choice to default to between choosing the balance of opening a business and saving someone's life. I agree with you. We fully agree. But we know collectively working together, even parts of the region will have a more positive impact on reversing the trend of transmission, at least near our immediate boundaries. But it is a genuine concern for many of my colleagues, and we can disagree on the facts, but I want to recognize their struggle of closing indoor dining and the significant financial harm it caused to people built those businesses. Which is why we're all advocating in, part of the reason we're taking the measures tonight, that we need to give financial relief, direct financial relief to the operations that would be impacted by decisions in employees. Restaurants are already suffering financially, will continue to suffer whether or not they allow to continue offering to dining. As of last week, thirty-four hundred or twenty-three percent of the restaurants in Massachusetts are closed or shuttered. And my engagement with many of the owners here in Main Streets and the Chamber and other communities, we have unsolicited businesses and particular restaurants saying, I'm just going to close and pause and hold back and open up again. Other small businesses are also suffering. I don't want to ignore them, especially the ones that are not currently allowed to operate or recognize that. So we need desperately, desperately need financial support, one from the federal government. And hopefully, here's a package might come, I hope. I think we need to agree and it's well documented, it probably won't be enough, but we need it, and the state government. Here in the Commonwealth, I mean, the governor and legislature has done some good work, but other states have done more. Look at New Mexico, which I believe passed a broad-based three hundred and thirty million dollar package of more than a hundred million going to small businesses. And last time I checked, I think New Mexico is the forty-seventh ranked economy. Massachusetts makes a lot higher. And other states like Rhode Island and California, I believe, Minnesota, the region of Minneapolis just passes into a significant package. So the need is real and it is urgent. We know that because I think we all agree, if we don't ensure that the character and DNA of our business districts, squares and main streets remain and continue to thrive, we're going to look a hell of a lot different. And their restaurants, their creators, their makers, their artists, their small, you know, cool retailers, particular to Somerville and our culture. And this plays out in every municipality, and it's great that all these big investments happen. We're excited by the life sciences, but also they're coming here because of that DNA of their culture. They want to be here. Their workers want to be here for that reason. So it's important we step up for them. Almost one everyone I know to a tier recognize that we have to protect our health and the community first. But even though as a municipality, we cannot meet the full scope of the need, you know, what we're proposing tonight is that we have an imperative to act now to provide economic relief to the extent that we are able to help bridge even just a little bit farther until hopefully some more state relief comes. There's a bill currently lagging in the legislature, an economic relief bill, and the feds do something else. Most have communicated to us that they don't have much time, that they're burning through their own savings and capital run up at the end of this month. So, but do not take lightly, none of us do the decisions we have to make when asked why one versus the other. We are categorized in certain phases of the opening because the high risk, we are high risk. There are valid questions. Well, I don't have any cases coming out of my gym or my, or my business. True, but it's not about one business's totality of what we know the evidence shows. And also I want to be careful because across the state, the contract tracing is problematic right now. More than thirty percent of the contacts are not being reached in the first twenty-four hours, which is a critical time and more than a third are not being reached at all. But we know the high-risk activities and a time where we're facing a resurgence that's about to overwhelm us, we need to continue to lessen the risk. The more we and other communities can join together, the more impact we'll have. If Somerville is left on its own to do it, we are prepared to do what we need to do, but I am currently in those conversations with my municipal partners across the region and attempt to take the next step together. I think I should pause there, Mr. President, taking questions, kind of touching all of these things to some level. And maybe they can answer some specific questions before we get to the emergency relief, which I don't think, I don't believe those waters have been read yet.
Do we have any questions about the rollbacks and the current policy? I'd rather hold off on the financial items until we get to them. I see Consulor Davis.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick question on the rollback. Does that, and I raise this only because it's been an example that was given in a bunch of emails of, you know, why is this open? And that's not, et cetera, et cetera. But does, do these rollbacks include Legoland and such?
Legoland's indoor, the only thing that's open up in Legoland is the retail, the street retail, because all the retailers open. And that's a lesser risk activity for now.
Just so I, just so I have the answer when folks ask.
Yes.
Thank you. Consul Ballantyne?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, thank you. So I'm trying to understand in the context of the rollbacks for the recreation and was, what, what were, what was the city looking at? Was it looking at, and I think it's slide nineteen or twenty-nine, if it could be brought up again? Because I noticed in one spot or one of the bullets that youth under eighteen could recreate. And I'd like to know what the definition for them is? What they can recreate in and how does the city see the small businesses different than the, what the youth are doing?
Sure. For now, the youth activities, we are following uniformly across the region.
I believe it's twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. Thank you. So across the region uniformly, we are following the adjusted state guidelines for youth sports and activities. Around certain youth sports, if you recall, there was a pause, particularly around hockey, because a lot of the guidelines less too much flexibility in those activities, more not so much of the activity itself, the sport on the ice, but what happened before and after. The tightening up those guidelines for now appeared to have some effect, and we don't see as many cases going on. Overall, there, what we are hearing at present, that the activity themselves is not contributing to any spread, any significant level that we know of. So we have continued, you know, this is sort of accepted out across the region to follow the adjusted most recent state guidelines around youth sports. I'm fully supportive that there's something we can do, we should be doing, especially around our youth, certainly schools first. And then anything that gives them relief or helps to move around and stay healthy and fit. And that's why we continue to follow that. And for the time being, I said the time being, because we're closely monitoring across the region. And the other reality, it's similar, and we've seen this more so when the Commonwealth has around youth sports, that's why one of the adjustments they made was not, we found that when they had stopped youth sports in the Commonwealth, kids and families are going across state lines. And I'm full disclosure, I've seen it first year because I have kids involved in this level of youth sports. And then you go to some states and quite honestly, it was the wild, wild west. So I think that many of us believe Commonwealth's recent adjustments that you're not traveling, a lot of these sports no longer can travel and play across state lines, and we kept them at home with very more stringent parameters and guidelines on how the operator has been successful thus far. And, and there's been better compliance across the board. Now, we haven't seen that. One of the concerns, you know, use a good example like fitness centers, we were reluctant at the beginning, going back a few months to open fitness centers. And we were convinced that if we, it's better to keep our folks here in Somerville. And we do believe that, and we've seen some gyms with higher, operating at higher and exercising higher standards. We had higher ones in Somerville and keeping them here, but we can't control them from going in and out of the other fitness centers in some other community. The Commonwealth rules, they just said, you're not allowed to go play on a club team across state line somewhere else. And that's happening around all the Northeast thing in the United States for the most part. And that's had an impact. The problem with an operation like a fitness center is, I can honestly say, having brought evidence that in one town next door, I won't mention the town. There was a case with thirty-plus members in the gym at one time, and personally, no one had a mask on. And every city in town was basically because, again, we've been left on our own devices with minimal guidelines. And that is a higher risk activity. So for youth sports, but now the adjusted guidelines have had a, it appears to be a positive impactance. Not contribute highly or contributing to the high case of high levels of transmission. That could change if evidence changes, but the other activities are high risk. So that's why it's more when the youth, there seems to be a greater level of safety or certainty around it, has been communicated, not just to us, but every municipal leader. It's a concern. Now, when we get, I will say there's a bigger concern. I've spoken to President McLaughlin and members of the committee on high school sports. That's going to be a little different. That's yet to be determined as just because how they do the leagues and so forth and all the rules, that's going to play out a lot differently.
So I, I'm, I'm not sure that I'm a hundred percent clear on this. Can I, just a couple of questions? So which youth sports under eighteen are allowed to play?
It's any youth sport. With a, although we are not allowing indoor basketball here in the city, but for, in general purposes, the state guidelines states, and I there's so many people allowed any playing surface. So if you take a, I think in Somerville, we might be still more stringent than other communities, but just say a soccer field. I believe it's twenty-five, not including coaches. On a hockey rink, still twenty-five, but in games, that's certainly less, but they're doing skill sessions, not including coaches. And obviously have to take other safety measures, face covering, so forth, not only the locker rooms. And hockey rinks, parents are not allowed in during games, I mean, during practices, for now, they're allowed in during games. That may change if things, rules are not followed. So it's basically any youth sport unless the community has ruled out a certain youth sport. We're not doing football here in the city now because it's a scholastic sport that has not been approved right now at the school department, school committee for the right reasons. You're not having any indoor basketball happening at this moment. Or other sports, maybe indoor volleyball and so forth. It's been basically up until now, there was, I don't know if any lacrosse happened in the city, it was allowed soccer. There might have been some other recreation sports, like flag football, a touch, baseball happened, there's hockey going on and sports of that nature.
Okay, so I'm trying to make a comparison with the indoor fitness centers and what we're allowing the youth to do. So what I hear in terms of youth under eighteen is basically all the sports were outdoors, with the exception, I think, right now, if I understand correctly, is maybe it was swimming and hockey. Is that correct?
Correct. And let me, if I may add on the hockey part, the reason is one of the, and is the, Rich could probably answer more technically. Hockey rinks in general, and there's a specific amount where you're controlling the crowd. There's the air exchange is, is, is a level that is safer because there has to be a certain level of humidity. And there's air filtration exchange that assists with flow and proper air levels, air quality levels.
I'm sorry, you say that occurs while one is doing, is playing hockey? Or are you saying the, the founder's rink and the, the, the other rink have the filtration system?
There's a certain level of humidification that happens in all those rinks, and I think Rich can explain a little more accurately. So when the Commonwealth's reopening advisory board examined all of youth sports, these are some of the factors it took into consideration, you know. Air handling systems, where the sport was played, indoor versus outdoor safety, what are the other measures that they're doing? They most recently adjusted raising the level of stringency on them as a result of some concerns. The hockey concern was paused because not from anything else happening on ice. It was more before and after games, I gave you some example, and also, but I'll use this example, there was other sports, so people copula into the games. Parents or family members or others getting together, gathering in the parking lot and/or, or in other areas, what they should not have done. There was a lack of cooperation. I'm speaking broadly across the Commonwealth in terms of contact tracing, they wouldn't cooperate in contact tracing. Some of the things we heard, which we can confirm as well. And locker rooms right now, for example, in the, in the rink, you can't use the locker room, you have to show up. You can't even bring a bag in Somerville's rink, and a lot of rinks are similar. You have to show up, be the half dressed or be fully dressed and leave, you can't dress, you can't dress or change in the rink. So a lot of activity has been taken out as a result of evidence happening in most other places. And so there's a lot more uniformly across the Commonwealth in that activity, and there's a lot more, less of a concern in the levels because of the systems that are in place.
So now I get to the indoor fitness centers or the, the, the health clubs. Is there a problem in Somerville with the facility?
Can you be more specific in general, or when you say?
Yeah, so I forwarded your staff some emails about the, the numbers because I have constituents that run the businesses that are are hurting. I mean, your staff all has the, the, the emails that I forwarded you. So I am, I, I'm not sure that I am clear what metrics are being used for youth under eighteen. what metrics are being used for youth under eighteen to allow them to recreate. But yet we don't allow it for indoor fitness centers.
Well, I'd submit that two different types of activities. And the latter is a higher risk activity, as research and experts have stated. And the advice we have gotten as municipalities, why many of the larger communities have moved. Frankly, I'll tell you one statement, you should close everything you can right now. And these are the high-risk activities. And I don't, I, I don't think I can actually make a compare, I mean, I just said there are distinct differences between the two activities. One, and we see evidence, so it's been reported. There's better compliance here in, in Somerville, but the activity itself around gyms is, is a lot riskier. Much like indoor dining, and I agree, so I, and, but unlike a lot of the youth sports that are in place right now and where they're being conducted in Somerville.
So, so I, 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 I still struggle. I, I'm trying to understand the difference with the, the indoor dining. So I'm really trying to advocate here for our small businesses. And I'm unclear on the metrics or any uptick in these areas. And I, I realize you're saying what the state is using, but respectfully so, we don't always do what the state is doing. So, and we, we as a city say that we like to use data to inform ourselves on how we make decisions. So I'm trying to better understand, so my constituents can understand. What are the metrics that are being used?
So let me just say, I agree, we're not doing what the state's doing. The state is refusing to close indoor fitness centers. We are, along with the cities of Boston and the others I mentioned, because experts have advised us that this highest activity is contributing to spread. Where we may not have, you know, some of the case data may show, well, this particular establishment doesn't have any cases, it's the activity itself. And, and again, given where we are in the region, the mobility of people, it is a high-risk activity admittedly we all should be doing. And I'm, you know, again, I'm very cognizant of where the impact on small businesses. It is indoor, it is adults, and we see the, the high level of cases with adults. And in, and in given where we are, it's a prudent move, although, look, I get the impacts. And that's why we want to join with you to help support him now and in the city financially and advocating at the state level. It's different with the youth that we're seeing. And that doesn't mean that won't happen. That won't happen, it'll happen soon, but right now, and I agree, and you mentioned restaurants, I agree, I believe indoor dining should be rolled back. But mobility data that we're seeing and has been explained to us, shows that it's as frequent as indoor dining. At least in a couple of studies, which I don't have before me now, but in the meetings that I've had, it's not just Somerville, but across the regional coalitions and Omar, he's been part of some of those, he may chime in that it is clearly shown that those activities are high-risk and contributing to spread. And I, and I commend all those who follow the rules here in Somerville. But we're, you know, it'd be like me saying in Somerville, well, if, if, if someone in East Somerville is doing it better than Winter Hill or Davis Square, or someone, you know, we shouldn't do it. Where we're so tightly knit and mobile where we are, it's high-risk and contributing to the crisis we're facing. So that's why we believe it's the smart move and the justified move. And we're going to follow that advice. Omar, did you, I don't know if you interrupted, you wanted to interrupt in there.
Sorry, Mayor, I, I didn't mean to, and, and sorry, Mr. President, I didn't mean to jump in, so let me know if you, if I'm okay. Thank you. The only thing I would add, Mr. Mayor, through Mr. President, to Council Valentine. I think when you are asking about metrics, you're probably referring to what data may have informed that decision. And so if that's the case, those types of facilities have been included in the type of risky movement that, that has been shown to, to contribute to high transmission. And so it's a, looking at it on aggregate. One operator can be extremely good and it could be in a very good context where transmission may not be as likely. But on aggregate, the activity can be problematic, or is problematic in a high prevalence environment. The difference between adults and, and youth, and unfortunately, you can't separate the zero to eighteen, is that also on aggregate, data-wise, youth seem to represent a lesser risk when it comes to transmission and contributing to higher community prevalence, especially in those types of structured activities with supervision and face covering, scheduling, social distancing, et cetera. I'm happy to share, to share any of the, the data.
So I appreciate the time, the indulgence on the, that the president has given me. I guess I would just say, is I struggle. You say, or it has been said that, you know, if we closed recreation for youth down, they go outside and they go out of state to do that recreation. So let's bring them back in and let's open it up for them here. But yet, when you're talking about indoor fitness centers, you're saying now you're bringing in the argument of the mobility. And I still haven't heard the metrics that shows, or what Dr. and Mr. Kress, you know, might hear of a problem area. He has, has never identified this in any of his weekly updates when we were getting them early on in COVID on discussions on that. I will follow up, but I, I'm sorry, you haven't convinced me. You've just made an argument for, for the youth group versus that, I don't know, I see them all as one, I don't see the distinction clear enough. And again, Mr. President, thank you for the time, but I'm not convinced that the data is there to support this decision.
If I may just, I appreciate that, we respect it, disagree. Two different types of activities, I, I probably didn't do a good job in trying to use the youth as a comparison where the state made a decision based on the mobility, what was occurring, not just them, but adults as well, traveling across state lines, youth didn't travel on their own. And families in those settings were traveling across state lines. So they did their best, which we agreed with that step, to control that activity here and not just Massachusetts, but all the states in New England, it appears for the most part, and some of the northeast states. So again, I appreciate that, we'll share that information, but we believe the data and the information we're getting is clearly stating indoor fitness is a higher activity as well as others that we need to put tail back right now.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, I, I, I apologize, but you know, as a follow-up, I think you have to be really clear to tell us and to the community is then, at what point are you going to, which metrics are you going to use to say, oh, when are these going to open again? Or when we're going to open them? And we're not clear. We, we aren't given this, this information. It's not clear in the general data that, that you shared with us. Because you haven't told us the metrics that Somerville is making these decisions on. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, may I ask a clarifying question?
I would actually like to move on, Mr. Brookley, if that's okay, just because I feel like this conversation's been exhausted. I do just want to add though, to Council Valentine's point, that a lot of the, the, the reason we're hearing that young people don't transmit the disease as well is also a reason why a lot of parents have asked for certain students to, under a certain age to come back. So I don't need a response to that, but I see Mr., Councilor Scott wanted to be recognized on this.
President, I, I appreciate that we spent a lot of time on this topic. Full disclosure, when I'm not a city councilor, I, I do run a gym. And I think we shouldn't be closed. Full stop. What I think is extraordinarily frustrating to small business owners and to parents alike is the inconsistency being displayed here. I completely agree that there are differences in facility layout and compliance that happens in each individual facility. There's something very different about a spin studio with ten-foot ceilings versus a hockey rink with thirty-foot high ceiling. But the climbing gym, which also has, you know, forty-foot high ceilings, is closed while the hockey rink is open. And, you know, I, I, I don't, I don't, I am also not swayed by this argument about youth transmission when we see very clearly that youth transmission rates are in fact low. You know, when you're talking about twelve-year-olds and younger. But once you get into the high school age range, those rates climb very rapidly. And those are some of those kids that are engaging in these, you know, youth sports. If, if we're talking about restricting high school level sports, but we're still having club teams of high school kids playing out there, we're not being consistent in our decision-making. Unless we have the capacity to be making each one of these decisions on a case-by-case basis and being able to lay out the justification for why we're making them. I think having some consistency, both in our decision-making and across the board implementation of policy would, while it may be challenging for families to accept or businesses to accept, would be less infuriating. The, the tenor of the comments I get on this from people on all sides is exceedingly high. And I, I would just, once again, this is one of those places where there are too many evident inequities in terms of how these things are being deployed. To say that, well, to use the argument that, well, the state has said these things are safe. When we are actively making the choice here in Somerville to determine what's safe enough for us in some cases, but in other cases, we're deferring to state guidance, it doesn't hold water to me. Likewise, to say, well, some kids are going to go across the, you know, across the road or across the state to go play sports, I, I agree. You don't have to look far to find stories of people being willfully non-compliant and putting others at risk. But by allowing some of these activities to be open by, you're just telling people, well, we know it is a risk, but it's an acceptable risk until we see a cluster erupt. And frankly, to me, that's much like the way we frankly handle a lot of our traffic interventions. You know, addressing street, street modifications based on whether or not somebody's been critically injured. So I, I continue to call for more aggressive leadership on this. I share my colleague Ward Seven's skepticism, let's say. And, and this, none of this is new to Mr. Mayor, I mean, you and I had a conversation yesterday about it. But I just hopefully would shed some light on why, how I think we can approach this in a more, more general and more broadly acceptable way to the people who are frustrated on both sides. Because make no mistake, there are going to be people frustrated regardless of what call we make here. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if you care to respond to that, you can, but I would definitely like to move on to more items after this.
No, look, I, I, I recognize the frustration, the response, and I'd admit, I think we've been, we've tried to be bold, deliberate in our leadership, but also recognize our role in general, speaking not on any particular one of these issues in this region. And I have the benefit of being in that conversation, you all don't, I appreciate that. And I believe so many of these things do need to be rolled back. So just in general, I speak that I appreciate that. We are not taking a, a hands-off approach to say there's no risk until we see evidence of it. Fully aware, we are monitoring it. And we're trying to be as informed as possible making these decisions. So I appreciate those comments, we hear those comments. Sorry for the frustration, but look, we'll continue to work with you and the community. We'll try to be as transparent and inform people as much as possible on how we're making those decisions. We're also trying to lead the region in this right direction as well. I'll stop there.
Councilor Bar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you a lot, Mayor. And no, it's been, it's, it's, I don't know how to, you know, it's, it's a lot, you know. So and I appreciate, you know, like your leadership, you know, since this pandemic started. And also, I just want to bear on Council Valentine and Council Scott that, you know, in this regard, I'm not happy the way things have, you know, panned out. Because I, I agree that, you know, like, we need a regional approach, you know, to be able to like create really, uh, uh, really a robust change the way we want to see it. And so, but our system, you know, right now, I don't think is fair and equitable. Because, for example, let's say, like, can you explain to me why, like, say, you know, indoor hockey is open, why outdoor music is banned in Somerville, and then in Cambridge is open, in Boston is open? So it's like, it's, it's like, what is the rationale?
You know, first, let me really admit in sharing your frustration that there is no regional approach and it's patchwork at best. Yeah, I mean, we should all be, then it makes it less predictable and only drives the inequity. For everyone, but I'm going to, first, we restate, which I think you know the obvious, we're not fighting the businesses that are being closed. We're not fighting the parents who want to bring their kids back to school, they're climbing, we're fighting the pandemic, we're trying to do our best to lead that. So I can say my frustration is ten X more than that. And, you know, I would just say, we, we're not, you know, we don't care about, not just react to optics, to, I'm happy to explain the best I can why we're doing something. We have taken measures we believe are informed, the expertise by science and data of what we know are high-risk activities and, and adjust those. There are many activities that, that if you go between cities that are not uniform, which again, we have been told by the Commonwealth, quote-unquote, literally from the governor, if you want to do anything above and beyond in your city that's more stringent, have at it. And that's what we're dealing with. And the unfortunate part is, people in our community and businesses, that is unfair. It's unfair, most likely, and most importantly, to the people becoming ill, sick and dying. And, and that we are in this position now which we could have avoided. So I just want to make sure we keep our eye on that. I am not making any decisions, I'm going to, based on, I hope you appreciate this, it's going to cause a financial hardship because I am generally concerned about that. I'm going to do my best to make decisions with all of you in the community to keep people healthy and safe. And to fight like hell to give the people the resources they need to get by. I can't speak to why we're in this, you know. Look, you know, I know, I have a belief in why I'm in this situation, that there is an application of leadership at the state level, there's none by me. I'm willing to lead on that and I have been, I'll continue to do that, I promise you. If I could flick a switch and then we'd all act in a region, uniform, the same set of rules, and we'd be closely tied and coordinated, we'd be doing that right now. But I know doing nothing is not an option. And we're trying to be, move as swiftly as you can with as many people in the region as possible to have the greatest impact. And I hope we have some impact. But, you know, our businesses, what's killing the pandemic, excuse me, what is knocking the, what is knocking the economy down, these businesses, are not our interventions. So I want to be clear about that, I disagree. It's the pandemic. Until we take action collectively to get this surge turned around and get us on a road to recovery, we'll never be in a sustainable recovery of our local economy. Yeah, I mean, I think that's where it is. I, I, I don't agree that it's the interventions doing it. I know the interventions have an impact, but, you know, we're not, that's, that's what driving the economy, not the pandemic. And, but I have colleagues who are struggling with that. And I'm not saying because they don't care about life, because it's people. It's people when you make these decisions. And someone in your community, and those who understand, have been very understanding, and some will say, I know what you got to do, you got to do, I agree with that, I just want you to know I'm getting crushed. So I'm sorry for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to you, Mr. President, I just want to make a note that I've met even creative, you know, artists and freelancers that have not been able to, you know, told me, they've not been able to perform, they've applied. Every granddad has been, you know, like, released and they couldn't get it. So they're asking me, how can they support themselves and their family? When, you know, like, this, they can, there's no space for them to do anything, there's no clear guideline when they will return. It's, uh, it's, it's, so we, it's, it's a very frustrating. It's, uh, it's, it's, so we, it's, it's, it's very frustrating, you know, just for us to hear this. And yet, we don't have something, you know, clear cut to tell them that, you know, this is what you should do.
I agree, and we're fighting for them too.
Do we have any questions on the current COVID-19 policy at Somerville? There are no further questions. I'm gonna lay these three items on the table and move for approval and lay them on the table. Time now is eight fifty-one, and we're about to get into where it really matters, which is the money. So I think now would be a good time to take a five-minute recess, and then we will reconvene and come back and start talking about the meat of the subject. So we are in recess. All right, we are back from recess. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll to determine a quorum.
This is a roll call to determine the presence of a quorum following the recess. Counselor Klingon.
Present.
Counselor Mbah.
Present.
Counselor White.
Here.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Here.
Counselor Strezzo.
Present.
Counselor Nedergang.
Here.
Counselor Davis. Counselor Davis. I don't record Counselor Davis being present. Counselor Scott.
Present.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Here.
Counselor Rosetti.
Present.
And Counselor McGoughlin.
Yeah.
Mr. President, ten councils are present, we have a-
Counselor Davis, present.
Counselor Davis is here. We, we thought the dog was you, Counselor Davis, so I think it knocked us.
Thank God, it's a compliment.
All right, very good. And, Mr. Mayor, I like your new scene change. I've enjoyed seeing everybody's Christmas trees this year.
We're gonna, we're gonna, after this meeting, we're gonna decorate it, I'll do a better job. I'm getting out of my-
Hopefully, we'll do it by midnight, then. Um, could you read the next item? I believe we're on fifty-three, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, Mr. President. Item number fifty-three is a communication from the mayor, communicating information to accompany requests for consideration of items that are necessary to continue city services related to its response to the COVID-19 pandemic.
All right, Mr. Mayor, you have the floor again.
Thank you, Mr. President. After I get to the slides, I might lose video, but I'll still be on audio, I apologize. But listen, I, I think, and I am anxious to present this information because I agree, you know, businesses are being impacted, impacted by the pandemic. And we've been leading the charge along with other municipalities that Commonwealth, certainly the Commonwealth needs to do more, or more above on what they're doing to financially support businesses that are impacted by the decisions we have to make as well as their employees, and this is an effort locally to help our businesses. You know, just to carry on from the previous conversation, we are, we are, in short, curtailing those activities that pose the highest risks, that give us the greatest concern. And, and I'll forward you studies and, and information where we've been receiving of, you know, how COVID super-spreader risk is certainly linked to gyms, to restaurants and other activities. And I admit, as I admit, indoor dining must be curtailed as well, as well. So if I could get, I think I am on slide now thirty-two. Excuse me, thirty-one. So, um, this is-
Do we still see the presentation yet? I just see the agenda.
Is anyone up there? Push boom. Make sure it gets up there, Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I believe, sorry to interrupt. These, the, the following votes are for the COVID-19 budget. And so I believe this is the point where Director Bean needs to speak.
Director Bean, are you on the house there, you're off?
Yes, I certainly am, Mr. President, thank you. Yeah, so fifty-three is a very lengthy memo was submitted to your honorable counsel, incorporates many of the points that the mayor's already made in his presentation. To orient the council, I'm hoping that the city clerk could bring up the spreadsheet COVID-19 stabilization transactions. That's right, thank you very much. So just wanna give you a little history here, just to orient you. Through your wisdom, at budget time, we transferred three million dollars and created the COVID-19 stabilization fund, realizing that we would probably need to delegate city resources for the pandemic. And finally, before the tax recap, just a few weeks ago, the remaining free cash, the seven-point-one-two-nine-five-five-oh was also appropriated by your honorable counsel. We've earned some interest on the, on the fund. So tonight, in front of you, and probably the first actions would be to vote some further resources into the stabilization fund. And so the next two, the Wynn Casino Surrounding Community Agreement and the repurpose from Park Stabilization would be additional resources transferred into the stabilization fund. And these will be specifically delegated for the artist's and cultural community, which is actually the last action on this particular sheet. So just to give you a little bit of background, the Wynn Casino Agreement, and we, by the way, we get six-hundred-and-fifty thousand a year out of the agreement. We have a new tranche coming in now. Despite the agreement, Wynn is obligated to contribute a hundred thousand dollars a year for, quote, "a broad range of cultural events, street fairs, and art shows and festivals and related activities." So naturally, this is a, certainly, a, a, a clear delineation for the artist's community. So your action, which is, I think it is number fifty on the agenda, would be to delegate a hundred thousand from this year's Wynn Agreement, a hundred thousand from last year's Wynn Agreement. The hundred thousand from last year has yet to be appropriated by your board into a stabilization fund. So that's a total of two-hundred thousand, that would be number fifty on the agenda. The second revenue would be a repurpose from the Park Stabilization Fund. Now, stabilization funds are governed by Chapter Forty, Section Five-B of the Massachusetts General Law. Recently, we received a park grant for the Prospect Hill project, and we had already spent four-hundred thousand dollars out of the stabilization fund for Prospect Hill. So this, this leads us with four-hundred thousand that we can safely repurpose. A vote would be to repurpose from the Park Stabilization Fund and transfer that into the COVID Stabilization Fund. So those, those first two items would be revenue items, other financing sources into the stabilization fund. You, uh, previous, as, as we've noted earlier, back in November, we, uh, the, the council appropriated three million for the building renovations and HVAC improvements that we spoke about earlier. And you also appropriated half a million dollars for the artist's community. So we'll have a total here of an additional six-hundred thousand for the artist's community, would be the last action on this agenda. All of the others are pending in front of you tonight. They are individual COVID budget items for the period of January first to March thirtieth. And as the mayor spoke earlier about, we've said earlier, at this particular point in time, we have no guarantee of any future federal funding. We do not know when Congress will act, or if it will act, or whether monies will come back to the, to the states and the local governments, or whether they will act in terms of the restaurants or any businesses, not known at this, this particular period of time. So this is, this is a resource that we can delegate. We, we would be looking to do this over the three-month period. And of course, if there are federal monies, we, we will certainly be tapping federal and other resources prior to- Some feedback. All right. So this is just a general orientation. We have functional managers here, we have Mr. Bukeyley, we have managers who manage these items, who can explain each of the items-
I don't know what this noise is, it doesn't sound like you, and I don't see the microphones, any microphones on, but there we go. Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay, I, I'm hoping that everything I said came through. That just explains basically the items. As I said, we have Mr. Bukeyley and functional managers here on each of these appropriation items. The law requires appropriation for stabilization funds. It is also just reminding you, Mr. President, and the city clerk, it's a two-thirds vote of the council.
All right, is that endless, Bean?
Well, yes, Mr. President, so as, as, you know, I, I would recommend certainly, item fifty and fifty-one, that those would be the revenues to go into the stabilization fund before voting on the other appropriations.
Okay, before we get to that, we have Counselor Rosetti and Counselor Strezzo.
Mr. President, thank you. So through you, or actually, Mr. President, I had, had some conversation with Ms. Weber in anticipation of this evening's meeting, and I'd requested some additional information, as I, as we, I later learned, so did Counselor Ballantyne, which we received that communication through Ms. Weber. I shared with you, my colleagues, a report I received from Mr. Bean. I was trying to better understand what, to be reminded, what were the current balances in our stabilization lines? And what was being asked to be used, which would, what would be the balance? So through you, Mr. President, to Mr. Bean. On that chart that you sent to me in response to my question, I'm reading it as we are zeroing out a lot of lines on the stabilization balances. Is that true?
Uh, through you, to Counselor, through you, Mr. President, to Counselor Rosetti. What I should say is that this is a bridge. So what I failed to mention is that, of course, we don't have free cash at this particular point in time. Once the tax rate was set, free cash has gone away. We are waiting for the Department of Revenue to certify a new tranche for free cash. That won't happen till early February, according to the Department of Revenue. So our intent will be to replenish these stabilization funds. There is no way to meet our immediate needs for the business community, but for looking at our, our reserves, and we have reserves here. So there are some reserves that are more important than others, obviously. We are taking money from the rainy day stabilization. We are taking money from the capital project stabilization and street reconstruction, which we certainly intend to replenish when the free cash tranche comes in, hopefully in February. There are some smaller, and it will, when we get into the business relief fund, I, I was planning on talking a little bit about this. Some of the smaller ones are Wynn money from last year, such as the Small Business Assistance Stabilization Fund, which we zero out, and the Water Transportation Public Safety Stabilization, again, a Wynn casino item. Those are, uh, are, are balances that we can safely transfer at this time. We will replenish when that time comes, hopefully in February or shortly thereafter.
Okay, so through you, Mr. President. Ed, maybe I misunderstood the chart you sent me earlier today, which I shared with all my colleagues and I, and, and the clerks, so they have it. I'll give you an example, okay? So on the, you, you gave me the stabilization balances, every, every stabilization account we currently have, the unexpended balances as of December thirteenth. So I'm gonna use salary and wage stabilization as an example. So as of December thirteenth, that line had five-point-two million dollars in it. Then in the next chart, you have appropriated five-point-two million.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, Counsel, I'm sorry, Counsel. It, it says after appropriation. We don't, we, we certainly wouldn't touch the salary and wage stabilization fund, that's for our collective bargaining settlement.
Okay.
It says after, so that's no change. The only changes are gonna be small business assistance stabilization, water transportation, public safety stabilization, capital projects stab, that's the one million we put in, in July, that we're taking out right now, but we'll replenish that. Algonquin mitigation stabilization, which, that's a balance that's been seen there for many years, that we can safely move out right now. that we can safely move out right now. And Street Reconstruction and Resurfacing Stabilization, those are the ones that have changed. We will be replenishing those, of course, the key ones. And Rainy Day Stabilization, which is, you know, something we want to replenish as well, so that we don't have any problems with our bond rating agencies.
So through you, Mr. Chair, so that totals over $6 million, correct?
That's right, Counselor, through you, Mr. President. And the one that we had, we had hit earlier this year for the HVAC improvements was the was the, the Building Stabilization Fund, I'm looking for it on here, which we certainly would be a high priority to replenish, because I'm looking at that for the, to assist us in the high school funding in the event that we are over budget, which is an issue that you and I have certainly been dealing with on the high school building. Facility Construction and Renovation Stabilization, which has a balance of 4,155,000. Doesn't change here, but we did earlier this year, take a million five so that we could move on these HVAC improvements. So that would be certainly a priority to replenish. When the free cash tranche comes in in February, I expect it to be a very solid tranche of money. It's not going to be 19.6 like last year, but it's certainly going to exceed 12 million, given the fact that our operations slowed down in the fourth quarter of last year. The spend wasn't as deep as it had been in previous years, just because activity wasn't there. So I'm expecting a very solid free cash appropriation coming, a certification from the state coming hopefully in early February.
So then, through you, Mr. President, so it is your plan then to come back to this council once the free cash has been certified? It is your plan to come back to this council to send from free cash the monies that you're asking for this evening out of the stabilization lines to replenish every line back as it was?
Through you, Mr. President, to Counselor Rosetti, certainly all of the major ones, you know, I, you know, I'm certainly, like Algonquin, which has been unspent for years. You know, some of the smaller ones, the wind stuff, we'll have to think about that. But certainly, you know, the major ones, the Capital Projects Stab, the Street Reconstruction and Stabilization, the Rainy Day, the big ones certainly, and, and, you know, I think the memo suggested that we will be coming back for those. We'll have to see where we stand on the others when the money comes in.
Okay, then, Mr. President, one final comment, then. You know, COVID is devastating in so many ways, so many shapes. So this, for sure, the free cash use and the need to take care of our community because of COVID and because the larger-sized government is letting us down, that this will then impact in future conversations our capital projects plan that Counselor Ballantyne and I and others continually refer to that as our guide in our mouth. This will have an impact on those those prior thought-out capital projects, correct?
Are you addressing that to me, Counselor?
Yes.
Well, that, it depends upon what we appropriate free cash for. Certainly, this is, you know, if we need to keep the community whole, as the mayor said, we need to be keeping our businesses whole. So I think that this is a very appropriate move on the part of the administration at this particular point in time. So you know, we still will have substantial new growth down the line, hopefully, and we will be able to add to these stabilization funds. I would just remind the council that before this administration started, we had about $400,000 in stabilization fund money. And this administration, you can see the numbers here, 42,000.6. So I think we have done a tremendous job in building up these reserves, which we sorely need for the city's future.
Thank you, Mr. Bean. Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, for your patience. I'll yield to my colleagues and continue to listen. Thank you, sir.
Very good. I got Counselor Strezzo and Counselor Anita Gang.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Director Bean, and may I, through you, Mr. President, to, can I please also speak to Director Gallagani, who I see in the, in the.
Tom, are you in the house? Mr. Gallagani. I see your name. He doesn't seem to be responding. Do you want to ask Mr. Bean, and hopefully we can get Mr. Gallagani?
Okay, I have questions about the Wynn Casino, 200,000. So this is from, from last year, from Wynn Casino?
Yeah, Counselor Strezzo, yes, is 100,000 from last year that I, you know, speaking with OSPCD, they were intending to present to the council, create a new stabilization fund for this purpose. That hasn't, you know, that hasn't been done, so, and its purpose is dedicated to the artist community in Somerville, clearly. So that we got that, that would be certainly a good opportunity to combine that with the new 100,000 dollar tranche.
So the purpose of the purpose, the Wynn Casino money, you have plans to put it towards the artist community?
Yes, through you, Mr. President, Counselor Strezzo, yes, that's part of the agreement. It's written into the agreement. It's for, and I'll read it again, "to support broad range of cultural events, street fairs, and shows, festivals, and related activities." That's the actual language in the agreement.
No, I get that, but, but also, how is it, because Director Gallagani had been talking about.
I'm now.
Yes. And another.
Mayor Joe, can you please mute yourself?
Sorry.
All right, Mr. Gallagani is here. Counselor Strezzo, Robert.
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay. Do you want to, Director Gallagani, can we elaborate on this, the Wynn Casino money? And does this have any relation to the money that, that from the 10 million that Wynn Casino was supposed to provide to the city to help small businesses that they're supposed to invest in the community every year? How is this related? Is this related, or is this some other part of the agreement?
Counselor, yes, this is, this is related, but it's not the same money. The Wynn Casino Agreement has a number of different buckets of money that they're obligated to pay to the city. And in addition to that, they're obligated to make investments in several local businesses. So they need to, they need to spend money in goods and services, $10 million a year in some local businesses. This is not, that that money doesn't go directly to the city. It needs to be spent directly with businesses.
What is going on?
I have muted about everybody that I can see. Could people please just mute? Mr. Mayor, I think that might be you. I thought I muted you, but we can hear your car horn.
Mr. President, if he's using the dial.
I can't even hear what you're saying over this.
If he's using the dial line interface.
Kushbo, could you contact the mayor and ask him to disconnect and reconnect? By the way, Tom, you also have a wonderful Christmas tree. I've enjoyed seeing everything.
Because it's very, very lovely.
All right. Okay, we have some silence. Please proceed.
If I may, so is this in any way related to the money that we've been speaking about, in committee about? How this is how 10 million is supposed to go to the small businesses? And can we get, can we, can we also, in the process, get, get that to our small businesses as of now and et cetera? I know you're saying that.
Yeah, thank you. They're both a part of the same, they're both covered under the same agreement, but the $10,000 in goods and services that they need to spend, that Wynn needs to spend in Somerville, we do not control. We can monitor it, and we're trying to monitor to make sure that they continue to spend $10 million a year with our Somerville business, but that's not money that we can access.
Mr. President, can we take a recess until this this connection gets corrected?
I'm going to take a recess. Okay, it sounds silent. Keep going until we hear noise again. Who, Mr. Clark, did you mute everybody?
I have unmuted Mr. Gallagani. I am trying to unmute Counselor Strezzo. Showing that Counselor Strezzo is not connected to audio.
You want to check?
I would rec.
Yeah, you're not connected to audio. Something's wrong on your end. Why are we wait for, can you speak, Counselor Strezzo? Because I don't have the option to unmute you.
Mr. President, I will send Counselor Strezzo a message in the chat function, hopefully giving her instructions to regain audio.
All right. Counselor Strezzo, can you, no, still no. And I want to say that I blame Counselor Anita Gang for all this, because he just told me a minute ago that I'm doing a good job, and I told him that this would happen, something bad would happen. So I blame you, Counselor Anita Gang, who is also muted, by the way. Well, Tom, you seem to be the only one with an operational mic. Did you want to finish what you were saying?
I don't, I can repeat it a third time if you like.
Yeah, if you already said everything, that's fine. I just.
Yeah, I've said everything.
All right. How about you, Counselor Anita Gang? Can you speak? This is painful. All right, I am going to unmute everybody, and everyone, please mute yourself if you're not speaking. Counselor Anita Gang, are you there? Nope, it didn't work. This is ridiculous. Two-minute recess or recess until we figure this out.
Testing. Can you hear me?
Oh, we can hear you, Counselor Strezzo. Yay.
Thank you. Yay. Peter saved the day. Thank you.
All right, you have the floor.
Really? Really? Wow, this is. Okay, Director Gallagani, your Christmas tree was off, and now the lights are back on. What happened? So there was also, your, your Christmas tree was also muted, but now is unmuted. Okay, that was really bad humor. I can do, I can do way better, but not now. Okay, so so this is a different fund, the Wynn Casino money, this is a different fund, and this is from last year, is that correct? Through you, Mr. President, to Director Bean and Director Gallagani. Now you're muted. Oh, dear God. You're muted now, Director Bean.
Okay. Hello?
Yep.
Yep. All right. So on this, this, this one is 100,000 from last year, 100,000 from this year.
And it's to go to artists, which, of course, we need to support the artist community. Okay, so it's going strictly to artists. In what capacity?
Well, it will be very similar to the program Mr. Jenkins is running. Remember, you appropriated half a million dollars, so it will go under his aegis in the Arts Council to distribute. And I don't know if Mr. Jenkins is here tonight to describe that, but that, that's comfortable.
Good luck getting unmuted. It is not the night. Nothing? Okay. All right, I guess that's it for right now. If I have another question on this, I will come back at it. Thank you. Is Director Jenkins? No? Is he in the attendees?
I do not believe Mr. Jenkins is here today.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Director Bean.
Okay. Counselor Anita Gang, are you there? You say you're muted by an organizer, but my side says you're self-muted.
Ah, it's working now.
There we go. Yay.
All right, you can hear me, Mr. President?
Miracle. We can hear you.
All right, let's see if I can remember what I was going to say after all that. I just, I just tried to call in, and just as I called in and got connected, you told me that I could be heard. So I have a, so first, I just want to say that I agree with Mr. Bean about this administration's management of the city's finances. I think they've done a great job, and for that reason, I am always willing to give them the benefit of the doubt. So the question I have is not a challenge, it's just a question. I just want to understand some of the numbers. There's just a lot of moving parts here. Am I right to understand that, that after all of these expenditures are done, there'll be a balance of 5.2 million in the COVID Stabilization Fund? Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. President, to Counselor Anita Gang, that is correct, yes.
Okay, I just want to understand, so then we're being asked to take money out of a bunch of other stabilization funds for 5 million for small business relief? And I'm not, I'm not quibbling with that at this point. I will have a few questions about it. But I just want to understand why not use the 5 million in the COVID Stabilization Fund for this small business relief?
Through you, Mr. President, to Counselor Anita Gang, there is uncertainty. So this is a budget for the first three months of the calendar year through March 31st. There's certainly going to be many more expenses. A school department will, will have many more expenses, perhaps in terms of staffing, when they get a clear picture of their staffing. So I think it's very important that we preserve the, this balance for that purpose right now, that we meet our operational needs, not knowing whether we're going to get more federal or state funds. So that would be, that would be the purpose.
All right, I just, I just want to understand that. Thank you.
Counselor Ballantyne. Oh, we can't hear you now.
Can you hear me?
There you go.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bean, for all the information you gave me ahead of time and also the breakdowns. It's absolutely great, and it's, it's really clear. I just have two broad questions. One is, what do you anticipate will be coming before the council for bonding between now, outside of the COVID stuff, that's non-COVID-related, between now and June 30th?
I think through you.
I can't hear Mr. Bean.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
I still can't hear Mr. Bean.
I can hear you, Mr. Bean.
Okay.
Counselor Ballantyne?
If, if I could, I can't hear Mr. Bean. I am going to log off the audio here, and I'm going to call in. So if you could just take one of my calls. So if you could just, uh, take one of my colleagues up ahead of me and then I'll just, uh, pick up my two questions that I have when I come back in. Thank you.
Can you hear me though? Can you hear me right now? Up too late. Uh, do any other counselors have any questions while we wait for Counsel Ballantyne to log back in? No questions? Yeah, uh, okay. So while we wait for this, if Counsel Ballantyne is the only person who has questions left on these items, I should ask people right now if, uh, they have an issue with taking up the items as one or if they would prefer to read them individually and do a roll call vote on each individual item. Uh, I will keep it all as one unless anybody objects and says that they would like to do it, uh, individually. No comment? Up. Um, Counselor Nita Gang says as one. Uh, Mr. Bean, did you, and you said you had, you wanted us to take item, we, so we're up, there's Counsel Ballantyne. So we did item 54, we're on right now. Uh, what other item did you say that you wanted to approve before we moved to the money?
Uh, no, Mr. President, I was referring to the money, 50 and 51 are the revenues. So you're gonna have to vote that first before you vote the appropriations.
So you want, we're gonna take up 50 and 51, which I don't think read yet?
No.
Alright, well, Counsel Ballantyne, are you here? Counsel Ballantyne. While we wait for Counsel Ballantyne, Mr. Clerk, why don't you read items? Hey, there you are. Can you hear us? Now you're muted again. What is going on?
Can you hear me?
I hear you. There you go. Can you hear us?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Bean, can you speak, Sophie? Yeah, you.
Thank you. Okay, through you, Mr. President. So to answer your question, Counsel Ballantyne, uh, the IAM, IAM Department and OSBCD, as well as the administration are reviewing proposals at this particular point in time. Uh, I think that, that, that we would be able to answer that question more definitively, probably sometime in January or early February. Of course, the pandemic situation of also, uh, is a concern with, uh, any particular new construction. So I can't answer that definitively, what we're gonna be presenting, if anything. I think some of the ma- the major things we have put in front of you, obviously with Conway and Billboy, the recreational facilities. I hope at some point we can move on Healy and, and the I Farm, um, that those would be big ticket, uh, items. But I'm not certain that we will be doing that before June 30th.
Okay. Um, my follow-up question is, then what is the, what is the bottom you'll go as the Director of Finance or recommend for, um, the city? Like, where will you let our free cash be? How high will you let our, um, debt service percentage be? So what's the bottom line for you as Director of Finance for the city?
Well, through you, Mr. President, uh, that 7% metric is what we want to be watching over the long term. Uh, we may exceed that, you know, five, seven years down the line. Um, much depends, of course, on development happening. I think, as we said the other night in the Finance Committee, I think Boynton Yads is, is gonna be a big ticket item for the city. Uh, I do think we will be coming forward with, uh, some discussion around, uh, potential diffs for Boynton Yads, as well as the Claritin Hill project that I know that you've been intimately involved in. That's something we have certain we'll be discussing in the spring. Uh, uh, but, uh, that 7% metric, uh, we have to look at revised projections of, of, uh, new growth on the long term. And it's not easily done right now, um, uh, given the situation. So, uh, there are some projects moving forward, you know, like the Cambridge Crossing, and I think Boynton Yads will move forward, others are not. So I think that, that guides us, of course, is the development projections. And, um, the amount of, uh, you know, it's also an uncertain situation where the state will be in the next fiscal year. Uh, they did release their consensus revenue report, uh, yesterday. Um, they're looking at 2.8% growth in state revenue in fiscal 2021 vis a vis 2020. So, um, the question also, you know, comes is whether we're gonna be, we, we receiving the same amount of state aid next year as, as we are this year. The governor would be submitting his budget in, in late January. So many, many factors, uh, involved in this. But we are, you know, we are discussing and evaluating capital projects, uh, right, right now. And, uh, obviously, we have, we've been taken off track with the, with the pandemic. But, uh, certainly after the, after the beginning of the calendar year, we're gonna resume those discussions and try to determine what our path is gonna be.
Okay, um, thank you. So what is our bottom line where, for free cash?
Uh, through you, Mr. President, I'm not certain what you, you, you know, I, you know what the metrics are, is that we want to generate a minimum of 5%. And we, we certainly will be doing that, um, I see, in this upcoming free, free cash tranche, you know? So, uh, we've got to look at where this, where we're going in terms of replenishing some of these stabilization funds. And hopefully, you know, we're getting some federal aid here so that we don't have to move much more free cash in, in dealing with the, the pandemic. But, um, you know, we'll have to see what, how much we're gonna get and we'll have to see, um, you know, uh, you know, again, I think, uh, you know, as was noted, I mean, these stabilization funds are going to be there for netting down our debt service with the capital plan going forward. So, um, the question's gonna be is how we're gonna apply them in the long term.
Okay, um, thank you very much. And I do wanna also uh, echo a thank you, um, for all the work that you've done, especially, uh, you know, keeping, uh, you know, just a really, um, important fiscal oversight of our, um, finances, our municipal finances. So, uh, I thank you and I thank your team because, uh, I respect how you've le- led in the finance area this, uh, this city. So thank you.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate that.
Counsel Strezzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, I had a, just had a quick question about item number 58, please, Director Bean.
58. Let me find it.
You can hear me, so we're doing great.
Yeah.
For the out-of-school time?
Right, so, uh, through you, Mr. President. So we have functional managers here. We have members, uh, Bill Lathan is here, I believe, as well as folks from the school departments. We'll answer these, direct these, these specific appropriation questions that people are gonna be answering that.
Okay, yes, is that, it, now, uh, in last night in the, uh, Housing Committee, we talked about, uh, uh, this money, uh, the 50,000 going to, uh, Somerville Media Center, and is this, is part of that coming from this, or?
Uh, through you, uh, to Counsel Strezzo, um, I don't know. I think we will need to hear directly from Director Lathan or, uh, uh, someone from the school department, uh, through, or perhaps Ms. Ms. Harky. I, I won't be answering specific questions on these appropriations. We have people here to do that.
Okay, well, I was planning on, uh, doing all the appropriations at once. So if counselors have questions about individual appropriations, we should address that right now. And I see Ms. Latham, uh, DPW Commissioner slash, uh, Rec Commissioner slash Chief of Staff, uh, with a nice Christmas decoration in the back as well, uh, Ms. Latham.
Um, good, uh, good, good evening, everyone, and Mr. President and Counsel Strezzo. I'm gonna have to, I am on the phone right now with my, uh, incredible DPW crew. And, um, I need to address some issues right now with, with these phenomenal guys who've been working so hard this last two days. So I'm here, but I cannot speak at, at the, at the moment.
And this, Mr. Housman, are you here just to show us your tree, or do you have an answer for Counselors?
I do have an answer, uh, through you. Uh, the $50,000 was separate. That was from the summer promise budget specifically around a particular initiative. These funds, the majority are intended, I believe, for the Recreation Department out of school time programming. But there is $25,000 built in there to support remote, um, out-of-school time programming as well.
Thank you, Director Housman. Oh, that's all I had? Okay.
Alright. Do any other counselors have questions? Because it seems, uh, people are here to address individual funds. If you have a question about an individual fund, now would be a good time to ask. Don't once going twice. Okay, uh, Mr. Bean suggested we discuss items 50 and 51, which I agree with. Mr. Clerk, can you please read those two items?
Mr. President, item number 50 is a request of the mayor requesting approval to accept a payment of $200,000 from the Wind Casino Surrounding Community Agreement to the COVID-19 Stabilization Fund to provide COVID relief grants to the artisan cultural community. And, and 51, 51 is a request to the mayor requesting the repurpose and transfer of $400,000 from the Park Stabilization Fund to the COVID-19 Stabilization Fund to provide COVID relief grants to the artisan cultural community.
Uh, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Bean, just to be clear, why do you want, think these items need to be approved before we do other items? Is this for the money?
Yes, and Mr. President, this, these are other, you, you can't vote the other items till you have all the money in the account. These are, these are other finances that should just go in there.
Is there a problem voting for them all at once?
Uh, the, the appropriations?
Uh, we can, we could do a roll call vote on 50, 51 and all the other items we have, uh, 41 to 52, all at the same time.
Well, uh, through you, Mr., yeah, Mr. President, so yes, I, it, the, the law says a two-thirds vote. So if it's unanimous vote and it's done all at once, then you, you bet the legal requirement.
Well, that's why I'm asking if anybody wanted us to do individual. So if anybody intends on voting against these items, you should let me know, just so we can do a separate roll call votes. Here are no objections. Mr. Clerk, let's call the roll for items 50, 51. Uh, Counsel Scott. Now I can't hear you.
Excuse me.
Let's see. You're unmuted on my end.
There we go.
There we go. There we go.
I, I flashed on and off a little bit there. Uh, just to be clear, so this is, um, we're, we're voting on 50 through which number?
50, 51. Yeah, well, uh, basically 41 through 52, right? Is that what we're doing, Mr. Clerk? Mr. Bean?
Mr. President, the item 53, my understanding of the item 53 is that it introduces items 54 through 64. Mr. Bean has also discussed in that conversation of 54 through 64, he has also rolled in 50 and 51.
Okay, I, I don't have a, I, I don't have a question about, uh, the appropriation from stabilization funds. Uh, I do have some, uh, questions when we're allocating out of the stabilization funds, so.
Okay. Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, I was reading my wrong, so we're talking about 50, 51, and then 54 through 64. That's correct?
That, that's cor- correct. We should probably just do 50 and 51 to, uh, approve the, putting the money in.
We will do a roll call vote on items 51 and 54. Any discussion before that vote? And let me make sure everybody's unmuted, actually, so that we get an actual vote. Mr. Clerk, can you also check to make sure that's the case? Cause I see a lot of people muted still.
Uh, Mr. President, would you state the numbers of the items that we're voting on again, please?
Right now, we're just doing 50 and 51.
Thank you.
Looks like several people are still muted. So let's make sure Counsel White is unmuted and Counsel Klingon.
Yeah, I've been unmuted. Thank you.
Counsel Klingon's good. Are you there, Counsel White? Uh, Counsel Ewan Campen is also unmuted. Jesus. Let's see.
One day. It's Counsel Strezzo. I'm unmuted, ready to vote, but I'm going to, I'm going to stay unmuted because if I press that button, I'm afraid I'm going to stay muted.
That sounds good.
Mr. President, as I call the roll, we can, we can see who is not responding and make sure that they are not muted as we go through.
Okay, let's see how this goes.
This is a roll call vote on the acceptance, the approval of items 50 and 51, which transfer 200,000 and 400,000 dollars respectively into the COVID-19 Stabilization Fund. On those two items, on that motion, Counselor Klingon?
Yes.
Counselor Mbah?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne?
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo?
Yes.
Counselor Nita Gang?
Yes.
Counselor Davis? Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen?
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti?
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 counselors were heard and voted in favor of those two, uh, appropriations.
Okay. So now are we ready to do items 54 through 64?
Mr. President, we are. Those, as I understand it, are appropriations from the Stabilization Fund to various departments.
Yes. Any discussion on voting on items 54 through 64?
Mr. President, uh, can I clarify the clerks? Uh, they're not two departments. Uh, the money will stay within the stabilization fund we've been setting up. There'll be, there are certain departments that will administer each tranche, each appropriation, but they will not be going into departmental budgets. So I just want to make sure that's clear.
Thank you. And Counsel Scott, did you have a comment?
Yes, sir, I just wanted a clarification on 62, uh, for the public safety overtime. Is that fire overtime, or is that police overtime, or do we have a breakdown from the, uh, uh, department heads that are, uh, using that overtime? Uh, how, what that is and how it's COVID-related?
Do you have an answer for that?
I'll refer to the, uh, department heads who should be here on that, um, and also Mr. Big dealy.
Oh, Omar, do you have a comment, or should I give it to Mr. Bean, who I think is not hearing anyone out?
Mr. President, it would be your call. Uh, if the chief is on, I would defer to the chief. Um, if not, I'm happy to answer.
Mr. Bean, I, I said earlier, uh, let's see, either one of you, whoever has an answer to Counsel Scott's question.
Uh, through the chief, Bean. Uh, COVID related overtime in the fire department is for firefighters that are out, um, either COVID positive or they're out on quarantine due to exposure to maybe family members. And when they're out, it requires overtime to replace them.
Uh, okay, I mean, last I heard, we had exactly one case in the fire department. Has that changed?
One case present or total?
Total.
No, there's been more than that.
Uh, more than a handful? I mean, do you have the number?
Not, not, not in front of me right now. But it's, it's probably a dozen.
A, a dozen positive cases in the fire department?
Since the beginning of the pandemic, yes.
Uh, alright. I, but, thank you, Mr. President. I have a lot of questions, but not about the funding at this point. Thank you.
I, I understand, yes. Um, do any counselors have any questions about items 54 through 64? Again, we can read them, we can vote on them individually if people have questions. But I'll open it up one last time, the questions for department heads, and then I'm gonna call a roll, call vote on 54 through 64. Here are no discussion, please call the roll on items 54 through 64.
Mr. President, this is a roll call vote on the approval of items 54 through 64. On that motion, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 counselors have voted in favor of that motion, those items have been approved.
All right, Mr. Bean, I hope that's a look of relief and not exhaustion on your face.
Thank you, thank you, Counsel.
So we got those items, I think next we got item number 25, which is the HVAC system. Could you read that one again, Mr. Clerk?
Certainly. Item number 25 is a communication, it's a request of the mayor requesting appropriation and authorization to borrow $2.5 million in a bond for HVAC improvements to school and municipal buildings due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
All right, is there any discussion on this item? Here are no discussion, please call the roll.
This is a roll call vote on that item. Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 councils have voted in favor, that item has been approved.
Okay, so now on item number 40, which is a communication, can you read that one again, just so to remind people?
Item number 40 is a communication from the mayor conveying a summary to accompany the following repurpose and transfer requests, which seek to provide critical temporary financial assistance to local businesses and artists in light of the COVID-19 impacts on the local economy.
All right, Mr. Bean, are you going to cover this, or is the mayor going to cover it?
Mr. President, I think Mr. Galagani, Mr. Proakas can discuss the program, I think.
Okay.
No, it's Director Weber.
Director Weber, yes.
The mayor does have a portion of his presentation left to give before Director Proakas and Director Galagani answer and respond to any questions that the council may have.
Okay, and it's related to this item?
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, are you here? I sent you an unmute request, Mr. Mayor, if you're still in the building, the virtual building. You're self muted, Mr. Mayor, if you can hear me. Are you sure he's here?
Through the chair, yes, I believe he is. I apologize, I know he's having some technical difficulties, I can reach out to him.
Should we hand it off to Tom and George while we wait?
Sure, that would be great, thank you.
All right, George, you're here, I'll send you an unmute request. And Tom as well. Welcome back.
Yes, indeed, we are here.
Whoever wants to lead, we're on item number 40.
So item number 40 was the mayor's explanation of the purpose behind this, and then items that followed kind of explain the details of how we're getting here. I will provide a little bit of detail and background in terms of where things are going, although the mayor's presentation lays it out a little bit more clearly. But essentially, big picture, with the closure of businesses that are occurring at this time, the circumstances that we're seeing surrounding these issues are, involve making sure that we can provide a substantial effort to assist at the same time as we're also dealing with businesses that are, that are not currently able to either stay open or stay fully open. I think if you look in the big picture, and the one-page memo we gave, which is now up on the screen, kind of highlights that big picture, there really are three areas of concern about the financial impact of COVID in making Somerville, stay Somerville, and making sure that as we come out of this and get bridged beyond the circumstances that we're in now, that we find ourselves in a good position and have the community that we know and love in good shape at that time. And essentially, the three areas are the small business area, the issues with our arts and non, artists and nonprofit community and arts organizations, and then the third beyond that being our residents in need. And we spelled out in the memo, we're addressing the first two items through requests today, and we're carefully monitoring the third item, where there's, there's over $2 million of funding available right now going out through, from us, through our nonprofits to the community. And should we find that money is being depleted, and there aren't federal resources coming to, to back that up, there was some news today that looks like the federal stimulus bill currently being discussed will provide rental assistance. So hopefully, that can be covered on that front. But we're here today to talk about the other two items. So for small businesses, where to date we provided 1.7 million unforgivable loans from federal grants and 700,000 in fee waivers. Our goal at this point is to put a $5 million fund together, especially as we've now come into the second wave. We looked at the high-risk businesses, the phase three-type businesses that we're closing back down again, and the ones that we've never opened, as well as the risk that we may need to close indoor dining if the situation continues, and said, let's put a $5 million fund together that can really help them. We're still refining how that works in terms of how we would prioritize those funds, but Mr. Galagani can share a little bit more detail in terms of some of the things we're thinking. But the basic idea is we will, we'll be holding a town meeting with businesses in the next couple of days to kind of get their feedback on what to do in order to make sure that we can assist our businesses. Thing, people are really hurting out there, and things are really getting tough, and this will, this will be a big step towards ensuring that they can kind of bridge the gap from here to vaccine and back into an opening as we get through what I hope is the last surge of this virus, but the one that is pretty substantial that's going on right now. So that's the 5 million. Others know better than I do, kind of the strategy of the different funds they're coming out of. But the key issue is we, you know, as Mr. Bean was saying, where our intention is to replenish the stabilization accounts, once free cash is certified. Certainly, the ones, the ones that need to be replenished, so we're not going to leave these funds unfunded because we took the money for this business fund. And on the art side, we're looking at adding 600,000 to the 500,000 that we recently put into the Arts Community Support Program. The program Mr. Jenkins is running, that brings it up to 1.1 million. And two sources there, one, the Wind Casino money that you just voted on, on, on getting, getting access to. And then the other 400,000 from Park Stabilization, and others may be able to explain this better than I can, but what happens with parks is we get state grants for parks. We, we have to front the money, the state grant money comes in afterwards, and, and, and we've recently received back state grant money, so it's $400,000 in the account for money we fronted and got back. So it's a, there's an opportunity in a moment there where we can take that 600,000 and put it to the Arts Community Support. So those are the two kind of buckets that we're looking at and here to talk about tonight. And we're happy to answer questions on that. Certainly, Kusfu, if the mayor's available to share his outlook on this, I don't know if we got him back, that would, that would be great as well. But that's, that's kind of the basics of it.
Through the, through the president, he's still having some technical and audio difficulties. He's logging off and trying to sign back in. So I think that, you know, I think the discussion can continue, and apologies for the inconvenience this is causing everyone.
That sounds good to me. And Tom, did you have anything to add? Counselor Niedergang has some questions.
I'd be happy to answer, George and I both are failed to answer any questions, might as well just jump into those questions, I'm sure we can explain a lot through those answers.
All right, Counselor Niedergang.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I just like some assurance that the street reconstruction stabilization funds, a million and a half, will be reconstituted when free cash is declared, because that money goes for making our streets safer, and it's a desperate need, a life and death need in our community. So can somebody assure me that that 1.5 million will be replenished?
Through you, Mr. President, I can assure you, that's certainly one of the major accounts, and we're absolutely going to replenish that account.
Great, thank you. The second question I have is, you know, I note that roughly $3 million has been allocated for residents in need. And, and now the administration's proposing 5 million for businesses. And I, I certainly want to help those businesses, but my own priority is people. Businesses are really important, they add a lot to our community, but you know, if somebody can't eat, their kids can't eat, they don't have a home, that's, that's a desperate emergency. And so, you know, I note the difference in those sums, the considerable difference in those sums. And I did hear Mr. Proakas say that there could be relief coming from the federal government. I guess I just want to make sure that, that our cities and the administration's priority will be helping people in need, and we will do whatever needs to be done in that regard, should situation, should the situation of many people in our city get more desperate. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. President, if I may respond to Counselor Niedergang on that item?
Please do.
I absolutely, and I think all of us in the administration absolutely agree with you on that item. And, and, and that, that, that is exactly the perspective that we have as, as we look at this, that, you know, we, we need to take care of all of our community first, and people who are in the most need are, 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 are people we have to keep, we have to watch out for, and we have to have their backs in the circumstance where this is going on. The reason why the numbers are like that at this moment in time is because we're still, we're still looking at a number of fluid issues going on here. There's a very large state fund for rental assistance. If, if the, if the state fund for rental assistance works the way that it's supposed to, it will provide a lot of assistance for our community. One thing we did is we put $50,000 into helping our OHS team and our, and our nonprofits, as well as the money I should mention that the council put in to hire an additional person full-time at Office of Housing Stability. And one of the things a lot of those folks are doing is helping Somerville residents apply for the state money. And at the same time, OHS has been advocating for an amendment line in the state budget, which was approved and then vetoed, and we were hoping is then overridden, which would say that if you have a pending application for rental assistance and the funds haven't reached you yet, you basically can't be evicted in that situation. So basically, the landlord has to wait for those funds to come available. So the combination of those opens up a substantial state funding resource. That said, that money has been flowing slowly, our money is, is, in many ways is more flexible. And there's, there's a, there's one of a number of things that could potentially happen at this point. One is the state money starts to flow, and we're able to encourage more applications to state money. The other is additional money comes in, additional programs come in, additional rounds of block grants come in that we're also able to get out the door. So that will increase those numbers pretty quickly if we are able to do that. The third distinct possibility is that the federal government, through this new circumstance, provides more money. If none of those things occur, and we find ourselves on a line towards, towards depleting this $2.5 million, we will be back in front of this council with another conversation about that. Because that, we're, we're not going to just let these funds run out and leave people with no safety net. There's not, one of these things has to fall into place.
Okay, great, thank you so much for that response, I appreciate it.
Counsel Ballantyne?
Thank you, Mr. President. I meant to ask this earlier, and it might be more for Mr. Bean. I'm interested in knowing what the Algonquin mitigation stabilization fund was for. And the reason for my question is that line runs through, Ward 8 comes through Ward 7, and it's, it's also, there's been a bit of interest from constituents because they want to make sure that the pipeline is secure when we build nine stories over at Clarendon Hill. So I'd just like a clarification of what, you know, why that was originally set up and what it was for, thank you.
Through you, Mr. President, Counsel Ballantyne, this is a very, very old account from, set up in the year 2008, with Algonquin Spectra mitigation money, it was about $2.5 million, specifically designated for streets and mitigations from Algonquin's efforts up in the Winter Hill area. This balance has been sitting on the ledger for some, quite some time. This remained, this is, all, all that work was done years ago, I think 2011, 2012. The agreement allows us to spend that on any and all street reconstruction, the remaining balance. And it's literally been sitting there for several years unspent.
Okay, so it's, thank you, through you, Mr. President, so this is, was for some street work? Initially, okay, thank you.
Do we have any other questions from the council? So let me just ask this question. On the off chance, do people feel like they need to hear the mayor's presentation to make an informed vote on these matters? If anybody feels they do, we can move on to other items and come back to this. If people feel they can make an informed decision on the items that we're going to discuss, which is 41, which, to create the fund, and then 42 to 52, which are the items before us? Any opinions from people? If, if anyone does not feel ready to vote, we can move on to other items. But if people feel comfortable, we can entertain a motion to vote. Counselor Niedergang says he's ready to vote, Counselor Davis, I'm not hearing, everyone's saying they're ready, okay. While we just saved ourselves a PowerPoint presentation, let this be a lesson for next years. PowerPoint is not always needed to make a decision. So, Mr. Clerk, please read item number 41, and we'll take that one up separately.
Mr. President, item number 41 is a request of the mayor requesting approval to create the COVID-19 Small Business Emergency Relief Fund.
Any discussion? Here are none, please call the roll.
On that item, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 councils have voted in favor, that fund has been created.
Okay, so now for that fund, we have item 42 to 52, minus 50 and 51, which we already voted on. Any discussion on these items? Here are no discussion, please call the roll on items 42 to 52.
This is a roll call vote on the approval of items 42 through 49 and number 52. On that motion, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
And, Mr. President, all 11 counselors have voted in favor of that motion, those items have been approved.
All right, so that's the big items, and And thank you all, the staff, for coming and taking time to do this and sit them through the chaos with us. So now we'll move on to item number 66. Could you read that item, Mr. Clerk?
Item 66 is requesting the mayor requesting the acceptance of a $16,150 grant that requires a match from FEMA to the fire department for updating the hazard mitigation plan.
All right, we have Mr. Breen here. Do you have any comments, Mr. Breen?
David.
I apologize for the rush on this tonight. This was a grant that presented itself unexpectedly and the state gave us only till the first week of January to approve it and get it back to them. That's the reason for this, the request for the approval of this tonight.
Any discussion? Here are none, please call the roll.
This is on the approval of the acceptance of that $16,000 grant. Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 councilors have voted in favor. That grant has been accepted.
Okay, now we've got item number 65. Oh, there's someone there. Mr. Breen, yes, thank you very much for coming. 65, could you please read that item?
Item 65 is requesting the mayor requesting acceptance of a $42,335 grant with no new match required to the Mass Department of Public Health to the Health and Human Services Department for COVID-19 expenses.
Any discussion? Here are none, please call the roll.
Roll call vote on the acceptance of that grant. Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, with all 11 councilors in favor, that grant has been accepted as well.
Okay, and finally, we have items number 12 and 13. Could you please read those items?
All right, now we've got to catch up.
Yep, almost back to the regular order of business.
Darn close. Item number 12 is an order submitted by Counselor Mbah that the administration provide clear guidelines on how and when creatives and freelancers are able to start working again.
As we, might as well read number 13 at the same time.
That's right.
Yep.
Item 13 is an order submitted by Counselor Mbah that the administration provide a more uniform and justifiable decision on the banning of activities due to COVID-19.
Counselor Mbah.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's been a long night. I hope, I really, I hope that the individuals, you know, that were affected by this, some of them are still here to speak to this item, but thank you. I'm just building on, you know, like what, you know, like the good counselor from Ward 7, even started talking about indifferent, it's, this is just a subset of the bigger issues. And also the Counselor Scott also mentioned this. You know, this pandemic hit everyone so hard, but creative and freelancers, it really hit them the hardest, you know, that it, we don't even want to discuss about this. And these faces were put in place, you know, but how everyone could move forward, you know, walking safely, the creative freelancers were left out. I had a meeting with some of them and it's as a result of that that I had to put this. I'm sure a lot of you have gotten emails with an outcry, you know, like showing their support of this. Because summer was the prime time for them to make, you know, money. But it never happened. And so now it's winter and, you know, as they continue to wait to see when they could get back to their careers, you know, they haven't seen any clear guidelines yet. So, and this is nine months later, the community is struggling even more than ever. And there's not been one move to address how and when they'll be able to get back to work, to support themselves and their families. So, and I should note that one of them even told me that they've applied, like I said before, for almost every single grant that the city can offer, but they haven't been able to get it. So just with that, you know, there's one I would like, I don't know if first Sam Extin is there, you know, like he can raise his hand up, that would be the first person with your indulgence, you know, I wanted to speak to this item. And then also Alexey Richardson, he's also a freelancer. I would like to sponsor her to also speak so that we can all hear what is happening in our communities. These are people who live and walk in Somerville.
All right, Counselor Mbah would like to sponsor two people to speak. Seeing no objections, I have unmuted Sam and what was the other name?
Alexey Richardson.
I do not see an Alexey Richardson here.
Okay, Sam can go first.
Sam, you have the floor. Sam, are you here? You are self-muted on your end. Not hearing anything from Sam.
Can you see him?
I saw him and I have unmuted him, but it says he's self-muted on his side. Oh, there we go. Sam, are you there? Your microphone is on. Oh, it's off now. Um, if we can't hear from Sam, I would suggest, Counselor Mbah, we lay these items on the table for approval. I wish we were able to take up, I prefer to take residents up first before meetings, but today was a very busy agenda and I wasn't aware that these people were going to be speaking today. You are unmuted, Sam, if you want to give it one more shot. Going once, going twice?
He said he has bad internet.
Okay, well, I think we should lay these items on the table for approval. I move on to other business, if that's okay.
Yeah, and Mr. President, I think he also, he said he was wondering if he can call on the phone.
He can try, but let's, instead of waiting, I'll start taking up other business. So Sam, please chime in if you can get back to us. But until then, we will lay these two items on the table for now and go on to the next item.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, those were laid on the table for approval.
We'll just lay them on the table for now and see if Sam can chime in.
Very good. Brings us to item number 14, which is a resolution submitted by councilors Niedergang, Ewan Campen, Mbah, Klingon, Scott, Rosetti, Davis, and White, calling on the state's House of Representatives to pass three transparency amendments to the House rules for the 2021-22 legislative session.
On the item. Counselor Niedergang.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was planning to read the entire resolution, which is brilliantly written by people who work with ACTON themselves, but I'll spare you all that, given that it's 10:30. I will read the resolved section. This is relevant. You all may have heard that Speaker DeLeo may not be running for speaker again. This is all about the leadership of the House of Representatives. Others on the council have been more involved with some of these state rep races and are more knowledgeable about it than I am, but I felt, and Counselor Ewan Campen felt, it was time to ask the council to support this initiative, which the Somerville Democratic City Committee just voted over the last two weeks, 89% in favor of this same resolution. So the resolve is that the Somerville City Council endorses the Transparency in Power Campaign organized by ACTON Massachusetts, calling on state representatives to support three transparency amendments to the House rules for the 2021 legislative session. Specifically that, one, all votes held in any legislative committee are publicly disclosed. Two, bills are made public at least 72 hours prior to a final vote. And three, the threshold for a vote to be publicly recorded in the House of Representatives be reduced from 16 state representatives to eight state representatives. Now, it's quite astonishing when we think about the fact that the open meeting law that we're all used to functioning with does not apply to the state legislature and that some of these very basic principles of democracy and transparency, that committee votes should be made public, do not operate in the state house. They do in the state senate, but not in the state house. And so this campaign, this initiative is an attempt to open that process up to make the state house more transparent and not just for the sake of transparency, but because legislation that we all support and desperately want, progressive legislation such as the Safe Communities Act, climate crisis legislation, same-day voter registration, progressive taxation, have all been stopped in the house for a decade. And that also applies to things that we've put forward, like the real estate transfer fee. Many of these things would pass if the state house functioned democratically. So this is an effort to try to move that forward, to try to get the state house of representatives to function democratically. And normally, under normal circumstances, I think it's our custom and it would be my custom to not want to mess in some other body's internal deliberations. But in this case, I think it's entirely appropriate and valid because the fact that there isn't transparency in the state house of representatives is keeping all of this absolutely critical legislation that would make a huge difference in hundreds of thousands of people's lives in our state, keeping it from passing. So I'm happy to yield the floor now to anybody else who cares to speak on this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Strezzo would like to sign on. Any further discussion? Counselor Ballantyne would like to sign on. I will sign on as well because I love meddling in other people's processes. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this item was laid on the table for approval. And I see Sam is back. Let's give it one more shot. I have unmuted you on my end, Sam, and let's take items, load those items again. 12 and 13, let's take them off the table. And Sam, you have the floor.
Thank you, councilors. Can you hear me okay now?
We can hear you.
Great, thank you. Sorry about that before I had bad internet on the phone now. So my name is Sam Epstein. I'm the operator and owner of the Jungle Community Music Club and Restaurant. This summer, I served customers outside on a patio and the maximum capacity was 24 people. It was socially distanced. And that's the kind of environment that we're talking about and providing a safe place for musicians and creatives to be able to work safely outside like they were allowed throughout the rest of the state, Cambridge, Boston, all of our neighbors. So I'm not here to advocate for opening or banning any activities right now. I'm only here to advocate against the clear discrimination and scapegoating that I witnessed musicians experiencing. Musicians had a short window to work safely outside this summer. And Somerville is the only city that opened indoor hockey, but never outdoor music. Other cities, they even opened true outdoor venues, like for concerts, where you have a outdoor venue and it would still be required to be maximum by the state, maximum 100 people or so socially distanced. But Somerville doesn't have any outdoor venues like that. No one was asking to have concerts. They had outdoor venues like that in Boston, to a lot of ways, it was safe this summer. All Somerville has are restaurant patios where they wanted to have music. And so technically, the way that Somerville banned music was they banned it from all restaurants that wanted to have music added on their restaurant patios. A lot of them, year after year, had patios, had the entertainment license, had music out there. They were banned, just everyone, it was a citywide ban on all outdoor music. And it's talking about patios where people are already gathering. So this administration, I believe, did a great job giving clear guidelines to every activity, every business. When it was opening, clear guidelines about how the manager of every business has to follow rules on capacity. And every manager has the obligation to prevent gatherings. So gatherings throughout the state and certainly throughout the city, gatherings lines, they were banned. Every manager of every activity, every business is required to prevent gatherings. But musicians are the only group where this administration didn't trust them to follow the rules. I had asked all year and always got the same response that this city banned outdoor music because musicians, they feared, would attract uncontrollable criminal gatherings. Gatherings because of COVID were really not allowed at all anywhere in the state. It just didn't make sense to ban music because of the fear that there might be gatherings. So if Somerville had banned all Phase 3 activities, that might, you could argue that that would protect public health, maybe. But opening indoor hockey while banning outdoor music in Somerville, that did nothing to protect public health when you're banning it in Somerville alone. Those activities next door, all of them, hockey, outdoor music, it was all allowed this summer in Cambridge, Boston, throughout all of Massachusetts. So if Somerville really believed that outdoor music was more dangerous than indoor hockey, that it really needed to close outdoor music as it did, then it should have sought a scientific consensus with at least one neighboring city. That way, if the point of banning outdoor music was actually to protect people from COVID, then banning it with at least one bordering city would have protected people who go back and forth throughout the region. I agree with the mayor's statements tonight that it won't be effective in rolling back stages and baby steps. Due to border hopping, you need to protect people regionally, not town by town. I agree with the mayor there. Opening an indoor activity with contact like hockey while banning an outdoor activity with well-established rules and distancing and capacity rules, like a musician on a patio, that did nothing to protect public health. It was only a tactic of a strong man to look tough on Corona, to look tough. And the very last statement here, I want to speak a little bit about the author of these resolutions. Unfortunately, she was not able to call in. She's working tonight. So the author of these resolutions is a Somerville resident, a black woman, musician. She was not able to speak tonight because she's working at a department store with customers inside. And other days, she worked at hair salon indoors and that's making contact with customers. So this summer, she and I were both essential workers at the Jungle Community Music Club and Restaurant. She was working inside, live streaming as a musician, live streaming to customers who are outside and I was later bringing food to customers outside. And at that time, this summer, our state had only 400 cases per day, not 5,000 like now. So it was much safer this summer. I think it's not a coincidence that right now, the author of these resolutions, she is working still as an essential worker while I have the privilege to be home and on this call right now. I think it's not a coincidence that the indoor restaurant with no mask and indoor hockey with contact were allowed to open, but musicians performing outside were a group that was targeted as a scapegoat. The author of these resolutions said that of all the places where she works that are indoors and some of them seem more dangerous than the one job where she was denied the right to work outdoors safely, she said that it doesn't look like there's scientific logic applied. And there was discrimination between activities. It wasn't based on activities for the risk of transmission. The discrimination was consistently applied between participants of the activities based on economic class. So it's class-based discrimination. What a lot of us are seeing is that if your activity is something that disproportionately is owned or patronized by wealthy people, that's the best indicator of whether your activity is allowed in Somerville. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Sam. On the item, Counselor Strezzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. First off, our speaker is, I'm sorry, I didn't catch his name again.
Sam Epstein.
Sam Epstein. Mr. Epstein, you're referring to this as a resolution, but yet on the, I guess this is a question to Mr. President, but this is listed on the agenda as an order. Shouldn't this be a resolution?
No, it doesn't matter. I think he just called it a resolution because it could go either way.
Okay, so.
The intention is still the same.
Okay, um, yes, this is something that I've been working, on this summer, I had been asking around about. I'm glad we're talking. I'm glad we're talking about it, but over the summer I had been asking uh for some kind of symbiotic relationship uh with the city and the Arts Council to get artists back in um, back in and musicians back in um well, motion and singing. I'm a musician too. I'm a singer. I get how vitally important this can be and how when this is your craft, this is what you have to do. You have to perform and you have to do this. So my question is, um, are there any uh, is there any discussion or I guess uh about uh connecting the Arts Council again? Uh, that uh of of sick locations and has this been considered and can we consider this or I guess uh amend the motion or the order that that the Arts Council has brought into this because that was that that seems like the most natural um fit for this as well?
Well, I'll tell you uh from experience because I know that East Somerville Main Streets wanted to do outdoor music uh this summer and were told no by the Department of Public Health. Uh, so this is a Department of Public Health issue, which means it's the mayor's department. Uh, so I don't think amending these orders will change uh the outcome. I think this is a policy decision that the mayor and the Department of Public Health have to think about. So I would recommend laying these items on the table for approval and we'll send a copy to the uh head of public health.
Okay, yes, I've been, I've been asking about this all summer long, especially for the same reasons that the speaker was speaking about, that we were losing valuable uh outdoor time and space in which musicians needed to have that opportunity to recoup some chances to do their craft. Okay, that's it. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Any further discussion? See none. These items are laid on the table for approval with the copy sent to the um Director of Public Health and Safety. Counselor Bob.
Yeah, I just want to note that the Art Council is already, is currently already working on this. So just for the record.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next item.
Item number fifteen is an order submitted by Counselor Nidagang and Counselor Mbah that the Director of Summerstat, the Director of SPCD, and the Director of Parking reconvene the Parking Study Task Force in January two thousand twenty-one.
On the item.
Yes, Mr. President, I do want to say a quick word about this. You know, thi- this is not just about parking. It's kind of like the hip bone is connected to the thigh bone is connected to the neck bone. Parking affects everything on our streets in the city. So there's debates going on now about bike lanes and bus lanes on Holland Street and College Avenue. Uh, just uh as part of the Spring Hill Sewer Separation Project debate now going on about bike lanes and bus lanes on Highland Avenue and and it all comes down to parking. And I I'm not taking a position on either one of these. I'm just saying that this study was supposed to um ascertain exactly what parking we have and look into ways to use space on our streets uh and perhaps other straights, space as well, not on our streets like in people's driveways, more effectively uh so that we had more flexibility and could use our streets more safely. So it's not just about parking, it's about safe streets. And I understand uh that with all that was going on with the pandemic, uh this study was put on the shelf, but it's time to take it off the shelf and get going on this. Uh, there haven't been any significant changes in parking policy in the city in over ten years. And it's time for us to get into the modern era on parking. So I I really hope the administration will take this back up. Uh, you know, with some emphasis on it so that we can get some, some results and and start uh reassessing our parking policies in two thousand twenty-one. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Ballantyne and Ewan Campbell would like to sign on. Any further discussion? There are none. This item is laid on the table for approval. Next item.
President, would you please send that to Traffic and Parking for discussion?
Laid on the table for approval with the copy sent to Traffic and Parking.
Item number sixteen is an order submitted by Counselor Nidagang that the Director of SPCD report to this council on traffic calming for the stretch of Broadway between the Ball Square Bridge and Cedar Street.
Counselor Nidagang.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like this to go to Traffic and Parking as well. Thank you.
Uh, was laid on the table for approval with the copy sent to Traffic and Parking.
Item seventeen is Communication submitted by Counselor Rosetti reporting on the High School Building Committee meeting of December fourteenth.
Counselor Rosetti.
I'll be, I'll be brief, sir. Um, I did report earlier that uh, you know, we learned when the certificate of occupancy will be issued, so that is very exciting. We had serious discussion about education beginning in that building soon. Um, the contingency line for this budget continues to grow. It's greater, the amount of monies expended on COVID-related costs is uh greater than, close to seven hundred thousand right now. Um, our contingency line budget um grows. Right now it's in the negative, negative one point four million dollars, which that is an over budget. Um, we are looking very closely at other lines that may help us with some cost savings. But my concern um continues that this project is now going over budget. Where our next meeting will be January eighteenth. I'm anticipating uh a report to come forward um at my request this week. Um, by the end of this week to give us more detail on um the negative balance we now have. Um, and I will keep you all informed as I continue to learn more on, in that avenue. Our next meeting will be January eighteenth. Thank you, sir. I also requested um since the COO will be issued January fourth, hopefully, um, I requested the punch list be um shared with this building committee so we can see what items are still uh yet needing to have some touch up and fixing. Uh, thank you, sir. I'm available for questions if needed.
All right, any, any discussion? See none. This item was laid on the table and placed on file. Now, before we get to the committee reports, it's ten thirty-seven. We still have at least forty-five minutes of congratulating each other at the end of this meeting. So please uh consider this when reading your committee reports. Next item.
Item number twenty-one is a report of the Committee on Equity, Gender, Families, and Vulnerable Populations meeting on December fourteenth.
Counselor Bob.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, uh in accordance with your text, I will, you know, I saw your text. Thank you for, you know, uh making sure that I'm very brief. So the Committee on Equity, Gender, and Vulnerable Population met on Tuesday, December fifteenth. All members were present. We touched various aspects, you know, from parks, issues to Titan Nine, to snow shoveling, and uh to the police department in terms of uh how uh the protocol for like lockdown and drills. And yeah, so in uh and we ended up also with uh, you know, with pot-a-pot-y again as always. So, but it's pretty detailed, you know, uh Mr. Fosilisi helped us craft this committee report and uh I think people can find it online. It's also attached to the meeting minutes and uh I will, I will ask that this uh report be accepted as submitted.
Excellent committee report, Counselor Bob. Any discussion? Here are none. This item is laid on the table for approval.
Item number twenty-two is a report of the Committee on Finance, which met on December fourteenth.
Counselor Scott.
Uh, thank you. The committee met on the fourteenth uh for an hour and a half, and I expect this report to only take twice as long as that. Uh, we reviewed a uh, a few items, the notable ones being a Home Rule Petition. Uh, it's basically outsource all of our emergency services for one building in North Point that sits in Somerville uh to Cambridge. So uh they'll, they will take care of all that. It's no cost to the city. It's just basically allowing their uh emergency services to handle that one building. Uh, so that will be a Home Rule Petition that everybody will need to sign, which is why I bring it up here. Uh, there were a number of grants reviewed uh with great scrutiny. Uh, a enormous volume of information was dumped uh to us regarding VPW invoices and expenses uh which will need further review. The continuing question of uh what the heck's going on now at TPW is one that I know counsel, my, one of my colleagues at large and several others have been asking. So now we have a great amount of data to sort through to help answer those questions. Uh, and finally, there was the Dilboy appropriation of one point six million dollars in bond for Dilboy improvements. Uh, this is to resurface the track and uh turf field in the stadium in particular. Uh, those were the main items of discussion, um although there was an entertaining side about the Navy, Somerville Navy and the money that went to that. Uh, further information was provided by the administration. So if anybody'd like to see where that money's getting spent, we can pass that along. Uh, with that, I'd ask that the report be accepted as submitted. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Scott moves to accept the committee report as submitted. See no discussion. Um, well, I guess we're going to do a roll call vote to approve this committee report, and then we have a couple of votes in there as well. Uh, so Mr. Clerk, please call the roll on the committee report.
That's correct, Mr. President. The first vote is on the approval of the Finance Committee report as presented. On that item, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezo.
Yep, yes.
Counselor Nid- Counselor Nidagang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all eleven counselors are voted in favor. Committee report has been accepted.
Okay, now we have one or two votes there, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, uh I suggest we do two separate votes. One is on item number two one zero seven five four, which was that Home Rule Petition regarding emergency services at Cambridge Crossing.
Any discussion? There are none. Please call the roll.
On that item, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezo.
Us, yes.
Couns- Counselor Nidagang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, with all eleven counselors in favor, the Home Rule Petition has been approved.
Next.
Next is item two one zero nine four one, that bond, the bonding of one point five nine million dollars for Dilboy Stadium improvements.
Any discussion? There are none. Please call the roll.
On the bond, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezo.
Yes.
Counselor Nidagang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, with eleven counselors in favor, that bond has been approved.
All right, next item.
Item number twenty-three is a report of the Committee on Housing and Community Development, which met as a committee of the whole on December sixteenth.
Counselor Strezko.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna do some highlights, quick ones. The Committee, uh Housing and Community Development met last night as a committee of the whole. It was virtual and it was about two and a half hours. We talked about the Winter Hill Urban Renewal Plan, some highlights, really quick highlights. Um, party discussion happened and uh back and forth on it and Counsel McGlaughlin motioned. And it was accepted that the Director of Economic Development worked with the Ward Counselor and City Counselors to develop the memorandum of understanding. So um, so that was approved. And so until then, it is staying in the committee. No further action taken. The community, we talked about Community Land Trust and they gave uh the, the members of the Community Land Trust gave uh some, some uh what would help move that process along. Uh, they're talking about Somerville Media Center reached out about um after-school programming and out-of-school programming. They um, they spoke and disclosed that they are having troubles with uh firming a lease and getting the contract signed for next year. They are not yet, they do not yet have a contract signed. Um, all of this is available in the minutes, which I ask that the City Council accept for this uh uh if that this committee uh report is accepted. And thank you.
All right, Counselor Strezo moves to accept the committee report as submitted. See no discussion. This item was laid on the table for approval. Next item.
Item twenty-four is a report of the Committee on Legislative Matters, which met on December seventeenth.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Committee on Legislative Matters met earlier this evening. Um, it was a specifically to address two items um that were, uh, these were uh resubmitted technology impact reports under the Surveillance Technology Ordinance for the uh nine-one-one system, uh technology and the Shot Spotter uh technology. Um, we, it was a brief meeting, uh relative to speaking. We uh voted to approve, to recommend approval of the Shot Spotter, uh, sorry, the nine-one-one uh impact report. And we um, a- after, uh, so after um, after I give this report, I'd like to sever the item uh that relates to Shot Spotter because we, we uh wanted to discharge it back. Well, maybe I don't have to sever it. I'll, I'll, I'll follow the clerk's lead, but we voted to discharge it uh back to the City Council without taking action. The reason is that um there was a, this afternoon, uh Director Weber provided us, uh on the committee, a, an audit, an assessment that was provided uh that was performed by uh an organization within uh NYU Law School at the request of Shot Spotter to do a privacy analysis. Um, and they took a look at a number of of aspects of Shot Spotter and uh and I uncovered some, some, just some, some facts about the, what the technology does that was uh was not known to, to me, was not known to the committee. Um, yeah, Shot Spotter made a, a number of changes based on the recommendations, uh I think to their credit. Uh, and I wanted to, I requested that, that audit be attached to the impact report uh purely so that the public can also read it and just understand in the interest of transparency exactly what this technology is and does and and how, in this case, how it was changed uh based on some of those recommendations. So uh Director Weber and Lieutenant Di Gregorio agreed. They had no problem with that request. Uh, there is a new line in a revised impact report that is a, that is attached to this item that just uh references that privacy audit and the audit itself is attached in the item. Uh, so uh I, I think the process will be, I'll, I'll move to, uh, move to sever that one item uh to approve the report as uh, as amended other, as, as presented other than the separate item. And then uh take a separate vote on that separate, separate item. But again, as always, I'll defer to the clerk if I've got that all wrong. But uh, uh, other than that, Mr. President, I would, I would uh request a move that the report be uh accepted as submitted with that item to be severed.
All right, so Counselor Davis knows, probably knows better than me, but Mr. Clerk, could we possibly just replace the item uh with the updated item? What's the best path forward here?
Mr. President, because we did not take a, a recommendation on it, we'll need a vote from the council on that item because there wasn't a recommendation of approval.
So you want to sever the item and do what with it? Just leave it in committee or?
No, my, my request was so, so, sorry, I didn't, but so the next, um, in the, in the ensuing, um, about a couple, several hours now, um, Lieutenant Di Gregorio and Director Weber did uh update the report. It is now attached to the item um that is in minute track. The audit is there, so it is now um satisfactory to, to all of us on the committee. Uh, we didn't, we didn't take a vote on it at the time because we didn't have in front of us what was, you know, what would be the final version. So we now have that and my hope is that I, I would move to approve uh that revised version uh after the committee report.
Okay, so all we need to do is sever the item then.
I believe that's
Do you have the item to sever?
Mr. President, I have it.
Okay.
Um, actually, the, the committee report itself uh can be accepted as is, but it does need to be approved now. And once it is approved with a vote, then we will have that item discharged and before the City Council, which the City Council can then consider.
Okay, the hour is getting late. I'm losing my mind. Uh, on the committee report, Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I, I only ask because um obviously the meeting happened uh right before this one. And I only ask because obviously the meeting happened right before this one, so we don't have a report. So through you to the chair. So all of the items, all of the Surveillance Technology authorizations that were in your committee, are they all being recommended for approval this evening?
Mr. President, if I may respond through you to the council for more too. And the, the, all of the previously submitted impact reports were withdrawn by the administration last week. At the council meeting, that item was on our agenda this evening just to, to close it out, to effectively, you know, acknowledge that withdrawal. And then at that same meeting last week, they submitted these two revised reports. As you may recall, as in my report, I think I had a report last week, because of the potential interpretation of the 60-day time period for the council to take action on the reports, after which they would be deemed accepted. And because we're working together with the, with the administration to, to update the reports and make sure that they provide the full transparency that we all are looking for. Director Weber, the folks from the Police Department agreed to, to withdraw them, to resubmit the revised ones so that then there'd be no question about that time period, and we'll take up the others in due course. But these two were effectively ready to go. There was a few final requests that we made, and they wanted to take a look at the digital fourth comments on, on these two items and make any updates. So they, they submitted the, the updated revised versions at last week's City Council meeting. We discussed them earlier this evening. And with this one slight amendment to the, or change to the, to the ShotSpotter one that they made, we believe they both are suitable for approval at this time.
Okay, all right.
Then we'll take up at the beginning of the calendar year, still within our thinking range.
Thank you for the clarification, very much appreciated.
All right, any more discussion on the committee report? Clerk, please call the roll on the committee report. Or can we do, yeah, let's, let's call the roll on the committee report.
There's a roll call vote on the approval of the Legislative Matters Committee report as submitted. Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Kempin.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 councilors have voted in favor. The committee report has been accepted. And now, item number 211028 is before the City Council.
Mr. President, move, move for approval of this item. Counselor Davis moves for approval. Seeing no discussion, call the roll.
On this item, 211028, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Kempin.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, with all 11 councilors in favor, that impact report has been accepted or approved.
All right, next item.
Mr. President, that brings us, whoops, all the way up to item number 26, which is a request to the mayor requesting confirmation of the appointment of Aladin Jaroff to the Commission on Energy Use and Climate Change.
Counselor Rosetti, we're referring all these to committee?
Yes, sir, please.
All right, Counselor Rosetti moves to waive the readings of items number 26 through 29 and refer them to the Confirmation of Appointments Committee. Counselor White.
Mr. President, I move to waive the readings of items 30 through 35. It's my understanding everything is in order from the clerk, and these are all renewals.
Okay, so you're moving to approve, approve them all. All right, Counselor White moves to waive the readings of items number 30 through 35 and approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, these items are laid on the table for approval.
Item number 36 is a communication submitted by PIRAC, which submitted its thing they do each year, submitting the required FY22 retirement system appropriation.
This item is laid on the table and placed on file.
Item 37 is an order submitted by Counselor Ballantyne that the Director of Health and Human Services and the Director of Inspection Services inspect 49 Chetwind Road and abutting properties for rat burrows and then rid the area of rats.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Thank you. Could this be referred to the Rodent Committee, please?
Absolutely. Seeing no discussion, this item is laid on the table for approval and referred to the Rodent Committee.
One second. Item 39 is a resolution submitted by Counselor Ewan Kempin that a representative from Eversource appear before this council to address reports about an October 16, 2020 incident at 20 Berkeley Street.
Counselor Ewan Kempin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I asked that this be sent to the Committee on Public Utilities and Public Works. Just, just briefly, these were residents on Berkeley Street. There was gas work being done. Contractors entered their property. This is the allegation. Accidentally severed their electrical main. That then, that requires them to privately fix it and submit a reimbursement request. The contractors that Eversource put them in touch with then did the work without masks. And subsequently, it came out that one of them tested positive for COVID, so they had to take a, the residents were required to quarantine, and they have just been tangled up with Eversource ever since. So I would love to have a conversation with representatives from Eversource about this in committee. Thank you.
All right, seeing no discussion, this item is laid on the table for approval, laid on the table for approval and referred to Public Utilities, Public Works. Next item.
Mr. President, that brings us all the way up to item number 67, which is a request to the mayor requesting approval of the Surveillance Technology Impact Report for Pol cameras.
Which item number are we on again? Sorry.
667.
67.
Mr. President, we can waive the readings of, waive the 67 through 72 and refer them to Legislative Matters?
Sure, why don't we do 73 as well? Because I'm going to put that in Legislative Matters. Counselor Davis moves to waive the readings of 67 through 73 and refer them to Legislative Matters.
Mr. President, that, I believe, brings us back to item number four, which is the first of the citations.
Okay, is it citation time already? Let's take these items off the table. I guess we'll do it very quickly. Read the first one, please.
Item four is a citation submitted by Counselor Rosetti commending City Councilor Matthew McLaughlin for his distinguished service as president of this council in 2020.
Counselor Rosetti, what a thoughtful gift. It's an honor to be nominated.
Wait, 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 no, no, no. I know it's late, but I just, I would just want to really and truly, on behalf of the entire council, thank you, Mr. President. And for the public's understanding, this was such an easy year for me to be your vice president because you'd never missed a meeting. So I thank you, I applaud you, and I appreciate your leadership.
I've been a captive audience for the past year, much like the rest of the public. So thank you very much, Counselor Rosetti. This item is laid on the table for approval.
Item number five is a citation submitted by Counselor McLaughlin commending City Councilor Mary Jo Rosetti for her distinguished service as vice president of this council in 2020.
I too appreciate you, Counselor Rosetti, even though you didn't have to take the stand for me. You're always there to talk to and talk a lot of trash to each other. And you're a very good supportive person, and I really appreciated your work this year. This item is laid on, did you want to speak on this? Or I guess, I think we're good, right? Laid on the table for approval.
Item number six is a citation submitted by Counselor McLaughlin commending Clerk of Committees Rose Durham for her outstanding service to this council and its committees in 2020.
I want to thank Rose, and I want to thank all the city clerks for all your hard work. I have never seen people work so hard. By that, I mean I literally haven't seen any of you all year. So thank you very much for your support and I look forward to working with you all next year. This item is laid on the table for approval.
Item number seven is a citation submitted by Counselor McLaughlin commending Legislative Clerk Peter Fosilisi for his outstanding service to this council and its committees in 2020.
And I really want to single out Peter because I know that he won't like it. Peter, thank you very much for your support. This item is laid on the table for approval.
Item number eight is a citation submitted by Counselor McLaughlin commending Assistant Clerk Committees Kimberly Wells for her outstanding service to this council and its committees in 2020.
Kim, I need the committee report for Legislative Matters in five minutes. Thank you very much. Laid on the table for approval. And thank you for all your work.
For, for the record, Mr. President, that committee report has already been submitted.
Of course it did.
About five minutes after that meeting, it's about 6:35 this evening.
Of course it was. Thank you very much, Kim.
I believe there's a motion to waive the reading of item nine.
Oh, no, not at all, no.
Item nine, item nine, item nine is, is a citation submitted by City Councilor McLaughlin commending City Clerk John Long for his outstanding work on behalf of this council in 2020.
John, against our judgment, we decided to not send you to committee for thorough interrogation. And that's probably what happened last, tonight. This is why this meeting was in such shambles. I can't believe it. Thank you so much, John. I really couldn't do this job without you. You've made my job a lot easier. And every council president that's come before me, I'm sure would say the exact same thing.
Well, thank you very much.
All these items, by the way, laid on the table for approval.
Mr. President, there is one more, one late item that has been submitted.
I forgot about that one.
We have a late item. It's a resolution submitted by Counselor McLaughlin that this council hereby welcomes Simon Ewan Kempin into our great city, extends his best wishes to Simon and his proud parents, and looks forward to Simon's participation in our community.
Counselor Ewan Kempin.
Thank you. That means a lot, we appreciate it.
All right. Any further discussion? Oh, we got to do a roll call vote on all items laid on the table, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, let's take all items off the table and move for approval.
This is a motion to approve items three through 16, 18 through 21, 23, 30 through 35, and 37 through 39. And, and place on file items 17, 36, 40, and 53.
All right, please call the roll.
On that motion, Counselor Kling, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Kempin.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, that motion has been approved. And I just realized that I unintentionally did not include the late item that was submitted, the resolution, the resolution for Simon Ewan Kempin.
Oh, no. Do you want to call a roll on it, I guess? Let's do it.
Absolutely. On, on welcoming Simon Ewan Kempin to Somerville, Counselor Klingon.
No, no, that's a yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes, please.
Counsel, Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Kempin.
Recused, yes, yes.
Recused. Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all councilors voted in favor of that item. Has been approved. There is no further business before this council.
No further business before this council. Counselor Klingon moves to adjourn. Let's call the roll. Before we say that, I do want to thank everyone for their hard work this year. This is a very unique year to all of us, and you all deserve some time off. We'll be right back to work very soon. I want to wish everyone a happy holiday. Thank you, everyone, for your work. And Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Is there a roll call vote on adjournment? Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Kempin.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 councilors have voted in favor of adjourning.
All right, good night, everybody.